Welcome to the December fifteenth Planning Commission. Beautiful morning, right? Would you please join me in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The two three hundredth over which stands one nation and another God, indivisible, with their keeping justice for all.
Okay, Sue, roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Rukuchi.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Sevison.
Here.
Mr. Arcurry.
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're all here. Good. Report from the Plan Director.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission, E.J. Evaldi with the Planning Services Division. Let's see, real quick, I'll cover just a couple, a couple routine items. You have on your consent agenda today, one item is the 2017 Planning Commission Calendar. And the only special dates on that calendar this year are for January, January fifth and nineteenth. Those are different than our normal second and fourth Thursdays of the month, so those will be special meetings in January. And then in November and December, we only have one meeting in both of those months due to the holidays. Of course, when we get to that point, if we find a need for additional meetings, we'll, we'll ask you for a special meeting at that time. So the next Planning Commission meeting is January fifth, that's going to be up in Tahoe. We're going to be, ask you to consider the North Star Mountain Master Plan. Hopefully, we have good weather for that. We got lucky this year, so hopefully that will continue. As far as Board of Supervisors hearings, on December sixth, the Board considered the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and the Tahoe City Lodge, which was presented by Crystal. That was approved, I believe, with a five-zero vote. And so Crystal's now taking that through the, through the TRPA process. Staffing-wise, if you haven't heard already, one of our planners, Sherry Conway, was recently promoted to the new County Economic Development Director. So we'll be looking at filling her shoes. That'll be, hopefully, a good relationship with planning and economic development, have someone with some planning background and SEQA experience. That's one of the, kind of the downsides of when you get good talent, there's always a better place for, for them to go, so we're going to miss Sherry. We're also hiring a couple of senior planners right now, or we have a recruitment going on, and hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll be able to fill those positions as well. And then lastly, Mickey Gray, if you don't know, this is Mickey's last meeting. You know, we really appreciate the time that you've served on the Commission. This is by your choice, moving on to, to, to other things. So just want to say thank you. You've always been respectful of staff, so we appreciate that. You've always put us to task with asking the right questions and difficult questions, and that's what helps this process. So thank you for your service, and we're certainly going to miss you on this Commission.
You're most welcome.
So with that, unless you have any other questions?
Any questions, E.J.?
What were the dates of the beginning, the fifth?
So for January, the fifth and the nineteenth.
Fifth and the nineteenth.
There's a sheet at the end, at, of the, at the end of someplace there, I saw it, that has the fifth and nineteenth on it, right?
Yes, you have it in your packet on the consent agenda, correct.
Can you scratch the twenty-fifth and nineteenth? Oh, that's TRPA.
Right, that's not on our calendar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is public comment. Members of the public may comment on anything not on today's agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on an item that's not on today's agenda? Yes, sir. Name for the record, come to this podium and tell us what your concern is.
Good morning, my name is Wayne Javelli. My wife, Periann, and I own a property at North Star at 116 Basque. The topic for this morning, we're requesting that the Porcupine Hill Tommy Extension be pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Pending further discussion.
Okay, well, we can, we, we'll get there, we've already noted your comments, and thank you, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda now, and there's several items at the end of our agenda here, there's A through E. Couple of them, there are just minute, minute meetings. And there's a North Star Porcupine Hill subdivision, which will be pulled, according to the gentleman here, and the Machara Place subdivision. And does anyone else want to pull any item from the agenda? One has been pulled, yes, Sherry?
Sandy.
Sandy, I'm sorry. I know who you are, I just messed up.
Sandy Harris, I got a notice that Machara Place was going to be on the agenda, and I'd like to pull that off the consent, just for a comment.
Okay, and so those two, item D and E, have been pulled for further discussion. Is there approval on A, B, and C, which is action agendas and Planning Commission meeting calendar? That's theirs, the meeting calendar is.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve those items, A through C?
I'll be glad to do it. I would move that we accept our consent agenda, A through C.
Okay. Second roll call.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Rukuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Arcurry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you might as well go ahead and do the, and we'll keep them in order here, in the North Star, at Tahoe, Porcupine Hill subdivision. Go ahead, our staff.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. I'm Crystal Jacobson with Placer County Planning Services, and I'm handling this item today. This was actually handled by Stacy Wyder in our Tahoe office, but I'm going to take it over for her today. So the item before your commission today is a request for an extension of time for the North Star at Tahoe Porcupine Hill subdivision and conditional use permit. This project was initially approved by your commission in 2007. It included, I should go to the slide, oh, can I, just got to flip all the way through here, hold on a second, because I do have some slides for you. Sorry, it's buried. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, so the project was initially approved by your commission in 2007. It included an approval for a tentative subdivision map to create 12 new single-family lots on about 49 acres of the site, leaving a 218-acre remainder lot. While the project has been granted several automatic extensions by the state through various Senate bills and Assembly bills, that, that would collectively extend the project approval through November sixth, 2016, this is the project's first request for an extension of time that is allowed through the provisions in, in our zoning code. So the applicant is requesting the extension because of the slow recovery of the economic downturn. So here's just an aerial, the project is located approximately six miles southeast of Truckee, along state, kind of off of state, State Route 267, and then North Star Drive. So, and the site is right up here, I don't have a site plan overlaid on the aerial, but it's right back in here. So here's State Route 267, North Star, and so the site is actually accessed off of Basque Road right here. And so some comments were received on the extension of time requests related to access, I believe that's why it was requested to be pulled from the consent agenda today. So I have included some exhibits on site layout related to the access, if you'd like to see those. So this is the access point off of Basque that you can see here, there are some homes along Basque. This is Skidder Trail. So again, the site is kind of back in here behind the Skidder Trail, the subdivision here, that front Skidder Trail. So if, if you, if you'd like to refer to these later on in your discussion, we can certainly do that. But what I'd like to point out today is that while, while we, there are comments received on, on the access, I think it's important to note that when reviewing the EOT, staff is not reevaluating the initial project that was approved back in 2007, but rather evaluating whether or not the extension of time request is warranted. So with that, what staff really hones in on when we're reviewing this, and what your commission is being asked to consider today, is whether or not there has been a change of conditions or circumstances that have occurred that could be a ground for denying the original application, and whether or not the applicant has been diligent in pursuing the implementation of the project. And finally, whether or not modified conditions are necessary to impose on the extension of time if standards have changed. And so with that, we have concluded that conditions here have remained unchanged. No circumstances have changed that would have grounds for a recommendation of denial. In addition, the applicant has shown due diligence. They did obtain the rezoning that had been required as condition of approval, sixty-six notes. So that was approved by the Board following the Commission's action in 2007. They have also recorded a parcel map that created, the parcel for which the subdivision would be located on, and also created that remainder lot. So finally, with that, oh, and then in terms of the conditions, we also reviewed those just to ensure that they're reflective of current standards. So with that, we are requesting that you approve the two-year extension of time requests for the North Star at Tahoe Porcupine Hill subdivision, rely on the previously adopted mitigated NECDAC that was prepared for the project, and again, subject to the conditions of approval and findings that are contained in your staff report. So I'd be happy to answer questions. We also have somebody here from engineering and surveying that could answer questions pertaining to the access if you have them.
Well, maybe that'd be the more appropriate person to ask, because it appears that most of the objections are related to how it accesses, the project accesses the main road. And I guess what I wanted to find out, Crystal, is there an opportunity to address this at a later point? Or would, if we approved this today, the extension, could they then come in and start, apply to start doing their development before there might be an opportunity to address that issue again, at some point down the road?
So if you approve this action today, you're approving the project as designed with the access off of Basque. So that issue, again, was sort of vetted through the original proposal, and so when they come in to implement the project, it would be as it was, as it was approved with access off Basque.
Right. I don't know how, about the rest of the Commission, but it'd be really helpful for me, is there, the proposal from the opposition is that it come in on Skidder at a different, at a spot that's kind of closer to where the development is going to be, the current development project. And I'd like to know, was that ever really considered? Were, are there limitations there, is the reason why it wasn't put there? It looks like the grade is fairly significant in there, I mean, it looks like there's a 50-foot drop from where, where it would come down.
Right, let me go back to that aerial. So the slide, so the site, in terms of slope, it's 15% to 20% slope.
Right.
Going up, off of, you know, off of Skidder. I actually was involved in this project years ago, and so do remember that we did analyze three different access alternatives, one of them being off of Skidder Road. And so that was, it was really, the, the bulk of that analysis was done through engineering and surveying, so I'm going to let them speak to those other two access points, but that was definitely analyzed and again, vetted before your commission back in 2007.
Is that a utility easement, is that why there's no, not a home there?
When you say that, the area...
Where it would drop sooner onto Skidder.
Up on here. I'm going to let Phil speak to that access point.
I believe that the parcel connects to the road right there, I don't believe it was a lot or an easement, I believe the parcel itself connected to the Skidder Trail Road at that location.
Because it looks like there are some utilities that are going through that location.
Right. And the reason that it was, that access was eliminated was the homeowners in that area where that access was coming in, they had some objections to it. Also, the Property Owners Association didn't, didn't like that particular access, so that's when they considered the other alternatives.
I can understand the homeowners, did the, did the association say why they didn't like that?
I'd have to look back to see what their letter said specifically, but we did have a letter from them. From the county's perspective, either the location at Skidder Trail or Basque was acceptable to the county.
Okay.
The third alternative was on a North Star Drive in this location right here, and this was not acceptable to the county because of the amount of traffic on North Star Drive and the number of lanes.
So the county didn't have any issues with what's proposed, where that access would be, because obviously, the opposition is having some issues with, with safety?
Correct, the, the design is acceptable to the county as far as those concerns.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, maybe another quick question. Instead of looking at changed conditions here, has there been review of accidents in that particular area or anything like that? That's what a lot of people are saying, it's going to be...
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of, of that information, if there has been.
So as far as engineering standards, it's okay even with snowy roads and icy roads and those conditions?
Correct, yeah, it would be acceptable to the, the county, the current design onto Basque, yes.
Okay.
Visibility is not an issue.
It meets site distance requirements.
Okay, any other questions, the staff?
I guess I'm a little confused as to, what would we have to find to, to make a change? Does it have to be something substantial, or...
Because it's already been approved the way that it is, correct?
Yeah, I can, the findings are very, they're actually spelled out in our zoning code, and so I have them here. But it's, it's really that no change of conditions or circumstances have occurred that would be grounds for denying the original application, that the applicant has shown due diligence in pursuing implementation, and that modified conditions have been opposed if necessary, which would update the permit to reflect current adopted standards and ordinance requirements. So those are the things that we look at when we're reviewing it, and that was what the Commission is being asked to consider.
Those are the extension of time, you're reading from page four, I guess, extension of time, one through four?
And I, you know, I'm, I'm just, I read off the zoning code, but there's also some, some specific findings in your staff report as well, and I don't have my, my staff report packages.
Is there one, you, you said most of them that were here?
Yeah, so...
Okay.
Is the applicant here?
Um, I, you know, I believe so, yes. Again, I'm, I was handling it for Stacy, so I kind of...
Might be good to hear from that.
Okay, great, I'm going to leave this up in case folks want to refer to the aerial.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask staff a question, as the applicant, no, not, well, okay, you can maybe answer. Proper procedure now, we have some, a gentleman took this off of consent, does the applicant speak first, or applicant will speak first and then the gentleman that took it, okay. The applicant's representative here, or applicant himself, herself? Okay.
Good morning, my name's Brian Hanley, I'm an attorney with Porter Simon, I represent Porcupine Hill Estates. Thank you for allowing me to, to give a little background on the project today. We echo staff's comments and recommendation that this, this extension should be granted. I, I sent last night a email to county council, and I believe that the legal standard's actually a bit different, and maybe county council can weigh in. I do not believe that you have the legal authority to condition the extension, and I sent a case to that effect. And, and so I, I do believe that it's, it's supposed to be an up and down vote on the extension itself, so...
So you're referring to maybe if we wanted to change the access point or something like that?
Correct, I, I think...
Because that's what's been discussed, okay.
It's wholly discretionary to extend or not to extend, but reopening the project isn't really within your authority at this point.
Well, that's the county council to weigh in after...
Sure, I appreciate that.
After you've left the...
And I'm sure, I'm sure she will.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, while we understand and appreciate the neighbors' concerns, and the original developer worked with the community to arrive at this access point, I think that can't be stressed enough. The applicant actually originally proposed the Skidder Trail access, and what happened through the public process were Skidder neighbors and the Property Owners Association actually opposed that. And so rather than try to shoehorn that in, the developer worked with those groups and came up with two alternative access points, as described by Mr. Krantz. This was heavily vetted, there's, there's multiple letters that, that are in his files back and forth in detail, just looking at each alternative access, how many trees were going to be removed, how safe it is. And there were pluses and minuses of each access point. And I think ultimately, the county said, we're not, and we had, the developer preferred the North Star entrance, and the county said, we prefer Basque, and, and the, and the North Star entrance isn't acceptable, and the Skidder Trail access wasn't acceptable because of NPOA's concerns and the neighboring property owners' concerns. And so this isn't something that's new, this is something that the county looked at, at length, over multiple years, and my client has since relied on that approval to file a parcel map. And I, I've got copies here of the parcel map, I mean, it basically tracks the access road there, that, that little sliver in red there is actually part of the parcel. So if you were to consider moving the access road, it would upset what was filed just a year ago, and that's what my client's been doing for the last year-plus, is working to get the parcel map filed, to carve the parcel off so that it can then be transferred to the developer. And, and so now, one of the logistical concerns is even if the Skidder Trail option was available, that land isn't owned by Porcupine Hill Estates. Porcupine Hill Estates has the right to this, the red road and the, the 40-acre parcel.
Okay. You know, what's going through my mind is, is not conditioning the proposal, whether or not there's been a change of conditions. And so, you know, what I'm hearing is the residents there are saying there's safety problems in, in the winter, particularly when the road is icy. And so I guess what I'm looking at, is that a change condition, or is that something that...
Sure.
Was anticipated and, and analyzed in the original analysis?
Sure, and I, and I believe it was, and I believe if you asked the engineering department that they would verify that, and I believe already have, that, I believe I heard him say the access was acceptable and met current county standards. So under that standard, I don't...
Yeah, I guess what I haven't heard, and we'll, we'll ask...
Sure, and I'm not an engineer, and we've, we've got our engineer here, and he could probably speak better to that point.
Okay, so I guess we'll hear from the public here, too.
As far as you know, has the Homeowners Association changed their position at all? Are you aware that they...
I usually don't, I don't like to, this, this came up at the last second, we were made aware of this a day and a half ago.
I see somebody waving.
But I think there is a representative here, and I was told by staff that he was going to be, support this alternative, but I hope that's true, but I don't know, I didn't have time to touch base. So with that caveat, I think vis-à-vis Skidder and Basque, I think the Homeowners Association supports Basque, but... So I think there is an issue of fairness here, you know, there's been steps, multiple steps taken by my client in reliance on the 2007 approval, including, without limitation, creating that parcel. My understanding is that, that extensions are routinely granted by the county for these types of matters, and so I think that, that bears mentioning. And I think Keith Masuda from Arboc Engineering can, can speak to this, but, you know, we're talking about 12 lots, and I believe there was a traffic study done that showed there wasn't an excessive amount of vehicle trips to be generated from these 12 lots. So as far as safety, you know, it, you know, that is a valid concern, and that's something that the county needs to be concerned with, but we're talking about 12 lots, we're not talking about a 600-lot subdivision. So I'll be here if you have any questions, if any questions come up during the rest of the presentation, I'd appreciate the opportunity to, to respond.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to, just, what our options are, you know, straight approval, not approval, change conditions, or...
Well, first of all, not to out Mr. Hanley, but he did send me the email at 11:07 PM, so I will profess to have just...
You can see the back, the back.
Just been reading it this morning, so I'm not prepared to give a, a complete detailed response to that. However, it, I think it is fair to state that, that I agree with Mr. Hanley's legal analysis and the fact that what you have before you is a very narrow determination. And that determination is based on the four findings that are on page four of your staff report, as to whether you can make those findings in the affirmative. This is not to reopen the original approvals of this map, which would include the access road. Change circumstances, I'd like to point the Commission to that particular finding, because it's not changed circumstances as you might understand it under SEQA. It's changed circumstances with respect to whether an extension of this map is, is, is appropriate. And those changed circumstances, what you would have to determine, or need to determine is if there have been any change of circum, that there have been no change of circumstances that would have been grounds for denying the original application. So it's a nuance that's very important to, to take into consideration here. So for example, the issues of Porcu, of the access road, you've heard from engineering and surveying, it appears, I wasn't around at the time this came through the first time around, but from what I'm hearing, what I've read, it appears this was, was thoroughly vetted the first time around. So what the Commission now needs to look at is there anything of circumstances that would have caused this map to be denied the first time it was around? If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I guess, I guess a change of circumstance would be, that maybe wouldn't apply to a subdivision like this, but if some kind of a structure was, was going to be installed or built, and all of a sudden, between then and now, an earthquake fault was discovered under the site, or something like, I mean, something like that, that would be a change of circumstance, that, that the building maybe would be unsafe the way it was originally planned, or, or, you know, I mean, something like that, that wasn't available at the time 2007.
I hate, I hate to speculate on that sort of thing, but let, but yes, you're, you're in the flavor of it, it's something that would have caused pause back when this first came through, that perhaps the subdivision wasn't appropriate at the time.
That we know now, okay.
Right. The notion that there might be other alternative access points, that's not within your scope of review right now. What you're looking at simply is, is, is it appropriate? Can you make these findings in the affirmative to extend the map?
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Karen, apparently, we can't really do anything today other than do an up or down on, on the extension, but what avenues are available to the opposition? I mean, from here, can they appeal to, somehow to the county?
Yes, there's an appeal right to the Board from whatever the Planning Commission decides here.
But I mean, aside from that, because I think the Board will have the same issue that we're going to have.
That's correct.
So is, beyond that, is there something they can do?
Well, I hate to give people legal advice, but there are appeal rights through the courts.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And one thing Keith Masuda will speak to, is, is I understand some of this can possibly be nuanced at the improvement plans phase, you know, some of the gradient and what slope is cleared out for sightlines and signage and things of that nature, so...
Okay, thank you.
You know.
Okay, open this up to the public now, and I, oh. And I'd like to ask the gentleman who took it off, he's, he gets the first pick of the, of the public.
Thank you very much for the time today.
Okay.
It's a helpful map. My wife and I spent the last nine days preparing a lot of other helpful maps, but this is probably just as good. I came back from Japan a day early for the chance to speak today, so I appreciate the time. In 2007, we were brand-new homeowners. If you look at the point where it says access off of Basque, right where that point of the red is, that's exactly where our home is, 116. In 2007, we had just purchased the home, we came into the whole process after all the decisions were made. And we took the opportunity to come up and speak to the Board then. Unfortunately, it was too late in the process to make it, make any impact. Ten years later, we know an awful lot more about this property than we did right when we bought it. That turn is precarious all year long. If you look at the drive that comes off of North Star Drive, it's downhill that whole way. Cars pick up speed the entire way down. And then they hit that turn, and they start turning to the left. Even in the summertime with trees and the speed and the gradient of the turn, visibility is very limited. In the wintertime, it's far worse. And we've had the benefit over the past 10 years of having a couple of good winters. When the snow berms are up, visibility is basically a blind curve. And because of the trees, it's usually icy. So right when you need to slow down and turn is when you can't. And because of that, all year long, or especially in the wintertime, cars skid out and hit the right side of the street, which is right in front of our home. So we see it all winter long. So unfortunately, when we look back to the original documentation on the project, and there's a box there that says, was a traffic study provided, the box is not checked. I don't know if it was, but the box wasn't checked, so I'm going to presume that it wasn't. And when you look at the folks that are called in to help the people that are being pulled out of that berm, CHP or local security or what have you, the data's, was not available to us to look at, but we live there, and I can tell you that it happens all winter long. And there's actually, at that service road, that's just basically a small track of road there that goes up to a golf service building, there's a couple of signs there, and, you know, every other season... know, every other season, every season, the signs are knocked down, because the cars spin out and they hit those signs. That's exactly where the intended access point to Porcupine Hill is going to be. So we support the development. I'm sure it's going to be a lovely project. I think investment in the community is good for all the homeowners. But the original intended access point on Skidder, which was preferred by the builder, is by far the more logical spot. It's much closer to the parcels. It's at a point of land on a straight piece of Skidder, that normally is exposed to the sun. So we've spoken to the local snowblowing service, plowing service. They have also, you know, attested that that's a much safer piece of roadway. Great visibility in both directions. It's flat. It's exposed to the sun. It's not icy. So even though the number of homes may be somewhat limited in the Porcupine Hill project, we'd be injecting that traffic in directly at the fastest, iciest piece of BASK, where visibility is its poorest. So you're going to have cars entering and exiting, slow-moving onto that steep, icy piece of road, right where the cars are having a hard time stopping. All the traffic from BASK can't stop. So there's going to be accidents. It's inconceivable that there wouldn't be. Now, personally, it's our home and our family, so the accidents are going to be right in front of our house. We don't want our family to be impacted, or our renters, or friends. I think you would have heard from more homeowners back in the day, even today, but unfortunately, most of the documentation indicates a project off of Skidder Road. So when you look at the title of the topic, you look at the body of the letter from the panel, in the last several years, the documentation reads "off of Skidder." So when we've spoken to our neighbors, they'll say, oh, it's a non-problem, where it's nowhere near us, it's off of Skidder. It doesn't indicate that it's actually off of BASK. And that may go back to the original two thousand and seven discussion, when it was intended to be off of Skidder, and no one ever started referring to it in a more accurate way. So in closing, you know, we have safety concerns. Somebody's going to get hurt. We very much hope it won't be our family, or anybody. It could be quite serious, because even though the speed limit should be the same all through that area, in reality, it's not. If you're there in the summertime or the wintertime, people pick up maximum speed right at the intended access point. It's icy. You can't see around the corner. It's just going to be a mess. So when we talk about topics that may justify the panel being able to reconsider the extension, certainly the availability of knowledge of the safety is new to us. But I will add that because of the development of Vail over the past, you know, decade, whenever the mountain is full, and it's been a lot more full recently than we've seen in twenty-five years, all of the overflow traffic is directed down to parking, all the way down at the end of BASK, at the golf course. So on the busiest days, which sometimes are snowy and icy, there's a steady stream of traffic coming down BASK, that's being sent down to the golf course for parking, as well as the minors camp, which is for the little kids. It used to be up on the mountain ten years ago, now it's down on BASK, off of the golf course building. So the busy days at North Star, when they're the busiest, that turn, we can't even get out of our house. We can't back out of our driveway onto the street. So it's a mess now. It can be precarious now. The thought of injecting traffic there will only make it worse.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience care to address the commission at this time, on this item?
Oh, it helps, sir. We put together some videos to give a better indication of what that looks like. They're on flash drives. We can leave it to the channel for it.
Give it to Sue here, our clerk. Thank you.
If I might add, in that packet is the original letter from us, which I think you already have. Testimonials from neighbors that didn't know that it was off of Skidder, or that it was off of BASK, are in there as well, as well as the snowplow service that recommends that it not be there. Also, there are the access alternatives, much more detailed than what this is showing. You don't really see the curve as dramatically as you do in the blown-up shots, where it shows the lots and the driveway just opposite the access proposed on BASK, driveway on the inside blind curve facing that proposed access. Whereas on Skidder, there's a photo blown up from Google Earth that shows, on the opposite side of the proposed A, the original access, here's a driveway, here's a driveway, here's the open space. It doesn't face a direct driveway. So less of a safety issue there. Also in there are documents stating the notice for the hearing today, as well as on the staff report for today, that the location is off of Skidder, which was very confusing to our neighbors. Both neighbors, no idea. No idea at all, because they thought it was down on Skidder. So that's all in there. The PowerPoint presentation is in there. There are four video, four slides, four to nine are video clips. If you just put your cursor down towards the bottom of the photo, you can play it. To see it live is so different than a static aerial view. You can see the contours. You can see the danger that we're talking about. On Google Maps or Google Earth, if you just go from one oh one BASK down to three twenty-three Skidder, you can do, I can show you easily after the meeting, it takes a minute, you can see exactly what that looks like if you were driving it, and do a three sixty panoramic around there. It speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can we get your name for the record, please?
Your name for the record.
It's Perry Yanjavelli.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hi. I'm Jeff Stevens. I'm the general manager of Napoa, North Star Property Owners Association. This has not gone before the board to discuss any changes. I can tell you that membership did vote to annex the subdivision. With the access off of BASK, we would be open to any discussion. And I'm here to answer any questions, but I can't really tell you, we would not have, we haven't changed our position, because it hasn't gone before the board, but I can't answer any kind of logistic questions in regards to what we would love to talk about. You know, if there was discussion about conditions of approval. This all happened right after I got there, so I wasn't part of the procedures to begin with. Reading through the conditions of approval, there's at least a dozen that I would have spoke up and said that that should be a little bit worded differently. I know that's not necessarily what you are talking about today. You're talking about extension versus the project. If the project is opened up, I would love to talk. I do believe, in reading the staff report, there was discussion, and I think Mr. Hanley referred to it a little bit, that there was some work around on BASK in regards to regrading that probably should be talked about, just for the neighbor's sake, to make sure that this is being addressed in the project.
Okay.
I'm here all day if you need me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience?
I just want to add a comment to Mr. Hanley's comment before, about the association saying that it was okay for the access to change. That this is my note in two thousand and seven, the first we heard about all of this. We shot right up here and came to the planning commission meeting. And in my note then, it said that we were, had the understanding that the access would be off of Skidder, after speaking with the North Star Property Associations, the association, and the general manager. So I spoke with them back then. Our understanding from them, they were new to us. We were new homeowner. We were under the impression it was off of Skidder. So didn't have any other reason to think otherwise. Didn't know about BASK at all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Not a call to close the public hearing?
Chairman, if I could to get back to what is under consideration for you today, I may suggest hearing from our engineering and surveying division, Phil Franz, on just the kind of blanket overview of the analysis that was done with this access in the original project, and how that relates to any changes in, you know, the project or circumstances today, and whether or not the analysis would be any different today.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So at the time, we look at the proposed access location. I'll just speak directly to the BASK access. So we'll look at things like site distance, to make sure they have the appropriate site distance, and other design features for that intersection. We also look at the cumulative traffic, so any increases in traffic since the approval would not be a significant change in circumstances that would make the county say that this access was not acceptable. So based on that, if the project were to come in today with the same design criteria of that encroachment, we would find that that access is acceptable. So we don't feel there's any changed circumstances that would have denied that particular access.
And the conditions that were referenced by the neighbors, were those, those conditions, I'm assuming, were present?
Correct.
And existed at the time that it was approved?
Yeah. BASK Road was there at the time. The slopes are there at the time. They're still there. One of the commissioners asked about the collision history, and our staff has taken a look at that, and they've gotten back to me that, in the past five years, our collision history has shown no accidents at that location. Now, the accidents that the applicant is referencing, if they're single-vehicle accidents that have no damage, they may not be reported. But if it was reported, then it should show up in the collision history, and we have had none in the past five years.
Thank you. Larry? Are you, I thought you were ready to push that button, were you? I thought you were going to ask a question.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to hear, sorry. I'd like to hear from, I think it was Arbach Engineering's representative, tell us what possibilities there might be as they go through, go forward with the development of the roadway and the project, that they could fine-tune and maybe eliminate all or part of this issue. Is that a fair question?
I'm Keith Masuda, project manager, well, one of the project managers at Arbach Engineering, survey manager mainly. But yeah, what, the process would be, when we submit the plans, county engineering will come back with their review of what they feel is safe, based upon current county standards. One of the things the neighbors had mentioned about backing out, just looking at it right now, I was just looking to see if maybe there were some way to incorporate their driveway into the new road, so they don't access back on the BASK, they'd access on to the new road. Maybe taking away some of the backing out issues of, on to the BASK Road, which I understand is, anybody backing out on to any of those roads out there is kind of tenuous in itself. So there are options. Some of it would, the problem would be is, our flag tail there doesn't actually touch their lot. We would have to gain an easement across that property from Vail, which is probably more problematic than anything else. So we got a lot of players, different players, that are hidden in the background of everything here. So it's, there are options. They may not be clean and pretty, but we could look at that if it became necessary.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't want to make the project prohibitive, but I think if there could be some minor adjustments that would mitigate some of the issues that they seem to be concerned about, that seems like it might be worthwhile.
Would those, would those kind of issues be kind of hammered out when the development plans or the grading plans are submitted to staff for approval, or for modification or changes?
Correct. The applicant will have to submit improvement plans for the construction of the improvements, and will give a closer look at all the design at that point, when they come in for their improvement plan approval, and so those will get-
Okay. Thank you.
It might be, you know, some of it may be addressed through signage in that area, a little bit more warnings of, you know, incoming traffic coming off from the side, steep grades, or icy conditions. More of a warning to get people to slow down into that area. Being that area, being more, secondary homeowners are not used to the conditions we have up there, especially in the wintertime. So people tend to drive like they're from down here, up there. So maybe, I imagine that some of the signage in there says, is there probably a curve coming up? Not so much being icy and steep and other things like that, so.
Well, I think typically, the worst part of an intersection like that is that if it slopes into the intersection, then the people come up to a stop sign, they put on their brakes and they go right through it. If you can make it a flat intersection by amending the grade a little bit as you move forward, I think it makes a big difference and would help a great deal.
That is part of one of the design, things that engineering does look at, as we do get into the process.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the engineering staff? Developers engineer, I should say. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions from commission members?
I have a question for staff, just as a general-
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Engineering, when you do site, line of site inspections on intersections, do you do it in the summer?
And the winter?
Well, actually, I'm going to have somebody from our transportation division come up and maybe address that comment, if I could.
Put somebody else on the spot here.
So I think the question's, hi, Stephanie Holloway with Transportation Planning. So I think the question was, do we do a site visit in both the summer and the winter?
Site distance, site distance determination is correct. Is it done both with the snow packed up there, and also summer when there's no snow? I think that's a question.
Right. So the site distance exhibit is typically based off of the existing grade, with and without, you know, with the project access. We don't necessarily take into account, you know, high snow year, where we might have snow banks. But we do also, when we're doing snow removal, that is something that the operators take into account, when we're removing snow, is trying not to put it in a location that it creates a safety issue.
So the answer is no, you don't do it with ten-foot snowbed?
The answer is no.
Okay.
But the removal of the snow would try and alleviate-
Yeah, but they can't.
No, I know they can't, when there's a lot of snow.
They can't do that.
Although I'm from down here, but I kind of understand that. Any other questions from commission members of staff?
I guess I'm just going to ask staff one more time. Can we maybe, as a resolution of this, suggest that we put a footnote on the approval that says, try to design the intersection in a way that would have the least impact on neighbors? Is that unrealistic to do, or can we just-
Would that be done automatically?
Well, first of all, I think it's stating the obvious, because that's what engineering and surveying looks at, when they look at the improvement plans and the road alignment. I'm also not a fan of a condition that is left to that kind of interpretation, particularly when you're looking at an extension of time versus the original project. I don't know if maybe Phil has some, if it isn't already in the conditions, something that states the obvious, that gives the commission a little more comfort level, that that's what they're doing. But I would recommend you leave it at that, and not make it as open-ended as the proposal. Frankly, I think, you know, that's what engineering and surveying does. But I'll ask Phil to maybe respond.
So yeah, we're going to, we're going to evaluate it versus our standards. Of course, there's varying standards. I think, Larry, you may have mentioned kind of a flat approach to the intersection. Obviously, that might be better than if it comes in at more of a slope. However, we do allow slopes into roads. So we will, we will make sure that the encroachment meets the standards that we have. We can, we can work with the applicant's engineer to get the best design that we can get.
Well, I think that would be, the obvious solution is to just attempt to make the intersection as usable as possible, without affecting the people across the street, I guess, so that we don't have a hazardous situation in this case. And now that we've been made aware of it, I think it's worthwhile to put a little effort into that area, and if we could do that, maybe that would make the issue go away.
Jeff? Jeff is, I guess I'm- Close the public hearing.
Jeff. I'm a little confused here at the direction our conversations are going. I understand the concerns. There's no doubt about it. But it seems to me that we kind of have confines of the decisions we're making, and none of this is new. And unfortunately, while we all, I think, up here are sympathetic to the issue and would like to see it fixed, right, you know, we have to rely on the planning process and the plan approval process, and county standards that we all approve and deal with daily to take care of this. It's, unless we feel it's so significant that we just- It's, unless we feel it's so significant that we just want to deny the application and send them back to square one, which I personally do not, I, I think that, that we're getting outside, way outside where we're supposed to be.
I agree with you, Jeff, and I think it's been without, as, as our county council said, we shouldn't be conditioning stuff like this. But I think this, the engineering division is, if they were, weren't aware of it before, which I'm sure they were, more aware of it now and will work diligently as, as approval process and the grading plans, what have you, come through to work, to work it out as best that can be worked according to the county standards. And there's always leeway in any standard, you know, when you're working diff, different things to make sure that the thing is, is the best it can be. So I think it's, it's better left at that location. We've discussed it enough, I think that everyone's aware of the, of the situation. Is there any further discussion, is there a motion or?
Just a question, so as I understand it, they came in, they have three access points in mind. County nixed one, so we had, excuse me, two left. And the reason one was chosen over the other is because at one intersection, more people objected to it than at the other. Now, there's more people at the other intersection, so now both groups are basically saying, use the other ones. So planning has already said either one works, so as far as I know, we're not, even if we voted to deny the extension, the same qualifications for the intersection occur with the county, so it's basically, they've already, as Jeff says, they've already been through both these, so supposedly we're just saying we're going with the original decision. It was right then, it's right now. Is that pretty much the way it looks?
I think so. Is there?
I'll move that we approve the extension of time.
I'll second.
Based on, based on the four, four findings here, I guess they're called findings. Is there a motion? There is a motion. And Wayne, second, roll call.
Mr. Chair, before you take the roll call, could we clarify that that motion was on both the sequo determination as well as the extension based on the findings and the conditions of approval?
Roll call.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss. Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Severson. Mr. Arcuri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's appeals, the, there's an appeal, a 10 day appeal and the fee, if I can read it here, it's $564. Can be appealed to the board of supervisors within 10 days. Thank you for coming and thank you for bringing your comments forward. I think it was a good discussion. I believe that'll, it'll work out. I think this is everybody's satisfaction. Now, we have the next item, we have Mashara, is that how you pronounce that? Mashara?
Mashara.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure how to pronounce that. Extension, this is another extension of time, it was pulled and so we have staffs here to give us the explanation.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Christopher Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. Before you, today is a request by Eureka Granite Bay LLC for a two-year extension of time for the Mashara Place subdivision in Granite Bay. Project is located at the southwest corner of Eureka in Auburn-Folsom Roads, south of Douglas Boulevard. The zoning on the site is residential multifamily with a density limitation of eight units per acre, combining as a designed corridor district. The project that was approved back in 2007 is for a 20 lots, small lot subdivision on a total of 4.4 acres. The lots were 4,300 to 6,900 square feet in size. Eureka Road is here on the, on the top, Auburn-Folsom on the east, and a West Placer Fire Station here on the west, and a Mobile Home Park on the south. A timeline, as I said, project was originally approved in February 2000. A series of automatic state extensions were granted, bringing the new expiration date to next year, next February 18th. The applicant applied for the extension October 25th of this year. If the two-year extension is granted, the new expiration date would be February 18th, 2019. The applicant actually purchased the property one year ago in December 2015. The previous owner who gained the original approvals was working towards implementing the project. I think they were on the fifth submittal of improvement plans. The new owner has decided not to move forward with that project and has submitted a new project application and August 1st, we received it. It's for a 28-unit condominium development and we're currently processing that application at this time. But to hedge their bets, they've asked for an extension of the entitlements that are currently on the site and we're processing that today. And with that, staff recommends you approve the two-year extension of time, relying on the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and the conditions of approval subject to the findings found in the staff report.
No, exactly what are we approving today? You said we have an old project and now we have a new project coming in?
You're approving the old project to give them two more years. So if the new project isn't approved, they still have the 20 lots subdivision, they can fall back on.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any questions of staff this time? If not, the applicant, any applicant's representative?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marcus Laduka on behalf of John Tattersall and Eureka Granite Bay LLC. We're not sure why this was pulled, so I do, acknowledge staff's presentation. Again, my client bought it a year ago, previous owner was well into improvement plans to process forward. We do have another application in place, it's very common when you're processing one that if you have an existing entitlement, you keep them in place in case the new application's not approved. So again, we're, we're not sure why this was pulled or what the issue is, so I would request the opportunity to address why that was pulled in the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Open it to the public and Sandy?
I guess the reason I asked to have it pulled is because I didn't understand the process. We have an approved project with mitigated neg deck already declared. And now we're looking at a new project for 28 units instead of 20. And I think the community just wants to make sure that we have the opportunity to respond to if they, you know, we hope they'll prepare a neg, mitigated neg deck for this project so we can respond to it. I don't think this, this one should apply to the new project, is I guess what I'm saying. It was just a process thing. I don't have any problem with extending the time, but we're looking at a new project.
Yeah, I guess.
And so I think we need to look at new, new application.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're not approving anything on the new one today. We're just saying the next other one, because the new one, you're right, if it comes before this commission, or it might even not even come here, I mean, maybe the staff will nix it for one reading or another, so.
I was surprised to even get the notice because I thought this project had died and we were looking at a new one. And we just want to have the opportunity to respond to any concerns we might have with the new project.
Oh yeah, that's all, that's for sure. Thank you though for that clarification.
Yeah, so there is a current application in right now and that would come back before the commission. And, and anything that happened with that, you know, project would nullify, you know, whatever decision was made on this project. Absolutely, and that project has to go through full environmental review, just like any other project.
And the commissions, if it went, went and if it does come to the commission, they could say, no, we don't like the new project for a variety of reasons, stay with the old one. And so they have the extension in place for that to happen. Okay. Anyone else in the audience? If not, close, oh, you want to, oh, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't think Sandy brought up too many new points and I ignored you, Mr. Laduka.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would note, the new project, as just was noted, is not before you, but we're still preparing studies and after, those are all prepared, then staff makes this environmental determination of what's going forward.
Right.
We're not even close to that point yet.
Not even close to that, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else from the public? If not, is there a motion to, I assume, extend?
Mr. Chairman, I think we're kind of in the same boat we were in with the last item.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we have any, any information before us that says that, that, that anything significant has changed to where we, we have basis for, for much of a discussion. And so it would be all right, I would make a motion that we approve the two-year extension of time.
And the sequa.
Subject to the sequa findings and the, the four criteria being found to be appropriate for the extension of time.
And just to clarify your, your motion, that would include also the determination of reliance on the prior adopted mitigated neg deck.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Did it move in second, or roll call? Larry second, I'm sorry, I should start saying that actually.
All right, Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Severson. And Mr. Arcuri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, the motion carried, okay. Does any, anyone need a break or anything, or? What, you can't? Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll just have a, a brief five-minute adjournment. And then we'll start with Morgan Creek, there was supposed to be a 10:05. We missed it by an hour.
We got the right day.
Shoot, well, that was actually a good discussion, we don't have those kind of discussions sometimes. Maybe we can start the meeting if now that Jeff has returned. Okay, this is the Morgan Creek Residential tentative parcel map, and go ahead, Chris.
Before you today is a proposal by Morgan Creek LLC to add seven new lots to the Morgan Creek Plan Residential Development in West Placer County. The project site is located at the southeast corner of Morgan Creek Lane and St. Julian Way within Morgan Creek. Excesses provided off of Vineyard Road, there's a gated subdivision entrance here. The golf course clubhouse is here in the event center, and there's also a event structure, a building here that's used for events. The golf course parking, there's an open space lot to the east, golf course maintenance facility to the east, the golf course obviously here. These are semi-custom homes to the northeast, custom homes along Morgan Creek Lane, Bridalwood Way in the south side of St. Julian Way, and also Ashbury Court. And then there's villa product, which are basically patio home condos in this area of Morgan Creek, so northeast corner of the Morgan Creek Development. And these seven new lots are somewhat patterned after the villa, villa product type. So I've tilted the site plan to fit better on the slides, so north is actually to the right, sorry. Subject site is 1.55 acres, is currently part of the golf course parcel. This site originally, when the Morgan Creek community was approved, was envisioned as having recreational amenities for golf course members. So planned were a couple tennis courts, a fitness center, a pool, and a pool house. So all that was built was the pool, which has been later filled in, in a pool house, which is now used for events. None of this was constructed. There is a paved parking lot here that the employees of the golf course have been utilizing, but that will be removed as part of this project. Zoning on the site, it's a planned residential development, so it's residential single-family, combining agriculture with a building site minimum of 40,000 square feet, a PD of one unit per acre. The Morgan Creek community is on both sides of North Creek, the northern side clubhouse is here, and then the southern side here off of PFE Road. Entitlements being requested are a tentative parcel map to separate that 1.55 acre parcel from the golf course lot, a final subdivision map modification to add seven new lots, so to split that 1.55 acres into seven lots within the existing planned residential development, and a conditional use permit to modify the conditional use permit that was granted under the original approvals of the golf course community. So a few pictures, this is looking south across the site from St. Julian Way. This is from the northeast corner of the site, this is the employee parking lot. This is looking north along Morgan Creek Lane. The trees you see here will all be retained, there's some oaks and some street trees. And this is the fence along the southern property line, the pool house meeting facility is here, this fence will be replaced as part of the project. Pretty simple layout, the lots will front along Morgan Creek Lane, there's a potential for a side loaded garage along St. Julian Way. All the lots here are 55 feet wide, in range from 140 to about 190 feet in depth. This just shows the fencing plan, solid or open fencing along the eastern property line, solid next to the maintenance facility, there is a row of trees here to provide a buffer. These are the trees that'll be retained, and there's some ornamental trees here that will be removed. Development standards, like I said, this is patterned after the villas, so front setbacks 20 feet, the villas are a little bit closer at 15 feet, but we've extended that back a little bit to be more consistent with the nearby 30-foot front setback for the large lot, custom homes of 30 feet. Garage front setback 25 feet, sides same as the villas, five feet, and a 15-foot rear setback, a little bit more than what the villas are, and a little bit less than the single-family homes. Residential size, we're going to 50% lock coverage, which is equal about 3,000 to 3,900 square feet. All the homes are going to be a single-story, similar, the villas are all single-story, and 25-foot height limit as the villas are. So we looked at the planned residential development computations for the original community to make sure that taking 1.55 acres of open space didn't screw up the PD, what our rules are as far as needed open space. The original project was 579 units, includes 515 single-family, 64 villas, so adding seven units will bring us up to 586 units, and our open space just slightly declines from 48.2% to 47.9%. Under our PD rules, up to 683 homes could be built out here, and with this project approved, there are 586, so there's still untapped potential out there for new development. One of the things we're doing is, it'll be, we're modifying the existing use permits, so the CCNRs for the existing Morgan Creek community will apply to these seven new lots. The HOA actually has to annex those seven new lots, or agree to include those in the HOA. So they had a vote this past fall, and they needed two-thirds approval, and I should note that it's two-thirds of eligible members, so there's 543 property owners in Morgan Creek. They needed 362 of those to actually submit ballots and say yes. So it's not 100 people vote, you'd need two-thirds of that 100 to vote, it was the 362 yes votes needed. So in October, after the vote, they actually got 394 yes votes out of 419 ballots, so it was approved by the HOA, and we do have a letter to that effect in the staff report. Yeah, we went to the West Placer MAC as an information item and also a action item on October 12th. Just a very few questions from the public, the width of the proposed lots compared to other lots in the Morgan Creek community, asked about water availability, how many additional homes could be built in the development based on the zoning and the PD regulations, which is 100, and they asked the property owner, would other areas of the golf course be developed? And the answer was not at this time. So with that, staff recommends you adopt the mitigating negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project, approve a tentative parcel map to create a 1.55 acre lot from the golf course and open space parcel, approve a final map subdivision to split that 1.5 acres into seven new lots, and approve a modification to the conditional use permit that was originally adopted for the Morgan Creek community, and these are subject to the findings and modified conditions of approval found in the staff report. May I be happy to answer any questions?
Richard, go ahead. Yeah, could you go back to the chart where you saw the setbacks? Okay, yeah, and this is just really for understanding. Now, these are going to be single-family.
Correct, detached, single-family.
And so I see the proposed setback, and setbacks there are by and large less than the single-family side of the chart.
Correct.
And so, maybe you could explain that?
Well, the intent with these are smaller lots, low maintenance, compared to the other single-family non-villa units out there, which are larger lot, most of those are custom homes. So these are 55-feet narrow lots, they pattern these after the villas, which are about 55 feet wide, and they're not really lots, they're patio homes where you own the unit footprint, and then a backyard patio area usually 20-foot deep. These property owners of the new seven lots, they'll own their backyard, so there's not an HOA maintaining the exterior landscaping. So it's patterned after the villas, not as big a product as the single-family detached out there today, so it's kind of in the middle.
Okay, so then the single-family standards there are not set in concrete there?
Correct. So the first two columns, the development standards, were set in the original use permit. So it says, here's what the setbacks are, there's development notebooks up front to that effect. Modification to the use permit adds this new column to only apply to the seven new lots that would be approved today.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, when I've been out there to some function at the golf course, that lot is usually, at least that's where I park, is kind of an overflow parking lot, where if the other parking lot is full.
I think the owner could speak to that. I've been out there several times, obviously during the day when there's no events at the clubhouse besides golfing. Based on our parking standards for the restaurant, the clubhouse, and the golf course, there is adequate parking in the parking lot today.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Wayne.
The MAC approved this unanimously, but it looks like they had some discussions about, or questions came up, but there's no recommendation from them on any issues, they accepted it as it is, right?
Yeah. I don't think anyone turned out at the MAC to voice opposition. No, and about 50 residents of the Morgan Creek community showed up, and the ones that did speak supported it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Let's go back to the parking issue, because, I guess I haven't been out there when the parking lot was full, but the commitment is, at least as I read it, was that the street itself is going to be limited in terms of parking.
Correct.
And each of the houses have to have a certain amount, so there's going to be agreement that they'll use the golf course.
Correct. So the developer of the seven new lots also owns the golf course, so we're requiring a reciprocal parking agreement in case there's not enough parking here, they have a party, they can't park along Morgan Creek Lane, they could, I believe they could park along Bridalwood, but the HOA might be able to speak to that or engineer a surveying. It's based on street width, so I'm not sure if this is no parking, but they would be able to park in the golf course parking lot.
So is that a given number of parking places that would be allocated?
It would be 14 spaces.
14 spaces in the golf course?
We require four off-street parking spaces, you can't, we're not supposed to count garages on streets that you can't park on or are too narrow for parking. So they're short because they have the driveway length for two cars each, so they're two times seven, 14 spaces short.
But it does sound like the golf course itself for special events is going to have.
Have a parking problem now. Even though they're meeting the standards, if they've been overflowing to there, they can't overflow to the street now.
Correct. The owners here would be able to address the parking issue out there.
Okay. Any other questions of Chris? If not, is the applicant, applicant's rep? Somebody raise their hand. Would you like, somebody like to come up and speak for the?
We've got questions.
For the applicant? The applicant? Oh, you don't want to come, nobody?
Do you have any comments for me? I don't have any.
Oh, okay, no, okay.
Want to address the parking issue?
If they would like me to.
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Yeah, come on up and address, state your name for the record, and then answer one or two questions.
Charlie Gibson, general partner in Morgan Creek LLC.
So as I understand it, Charlie, if they can't, visitors can't park in front of the people they're visiting's house, they'll be able to use that parking lot, the golf course, is that right?
Yes, they can.
Okay, so now you sell the golf court, and those people still own those houses, does that right transfer so that they can always park there regardless?
Absolutely. That would be written.
Is there an issue with special events, like I mentioned?
Um, you know.
Or is that just an isolated incident?
There's, you know, we've had a couple events where there were, you know, like 500 people, and, you know, Bridalwood is an option because of the street width, that's where the people park, we don't use it, we haven't, and there have been a few times in my seven years where there's, cars have been parked out there, but not ever a problem, and there are some other options on a big event that, you know, is, we get noticed, we know when they're booked, it shouldn't be a problem, it hasn't been a problem in the past.
And the HOA is okay with you parking on Bridalwood?
Yes, I mean, well, again, partygoers, and we don't, we've never, we never have, you know, so to speak, and once again, as you know, you don't really tell people where to park, they just kind of park where they park, and we've had, you know, parking issues haven't been a problem. I've never been approached by the HOA, and from a negative perspective about parking.
Okay, then I guess the county standards, as mentioned by Chris, are probably satisfactory for 99% of the events or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as I would know, like I said, I've never been approached by the HOA or the county about any parking problems.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Oh, go ahead, Larry.
Just a question, did I hear a comment just a minute ago about there being other areas that you're going to come in later with as it relates to the golf course?
Absolutely not. I was asked at the MAC meeting, do I have any other further development plans? And I said, my plan, I'm a resident there, I got to vote, is to sustain the golf course and the golf course business right now, and I'm not whining, but it's extremely challenging, and all the golf courses, if any was, anybody wanted to take a look around or trying to create any way to sustain and keep moving forward. It's a golf course community, and I certainly want it to be one for always.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming up, even if I forced you to come up. Okay, does staff, anybody in the public wish to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does staff have any additional comments, one way or the other? Nothing? Commission members, any comments or questions? Is there a motion then?
If the heightened.
Motion, if you get that thing back up, there we go.
Right, right.
There, there, that one there. Would someone like to make a motion?
I guess I can go ahead and do that. I move that we adopt the mitigation negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project. Approve a tentative parcel map to create a 1.55 acre lot from the golf course and open space parcel. Approve a final map modification to create seven new single-family lots. Approve a condition use permit modification, subject to findings, fair enough?
Subject to the modified conditions of approval, findings found in the staff report.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That's what I heard you say.
Hey, second.
Second, Richard. Row call.
Okay, Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Seveson.
Yes.
Mr. Akuri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Okay, item number two under the timed items is the Barton Ranch Rezone Tentative Subdivision Map and Conditional Use Permit. So, ready to go with that one?
Morning. Item before you is the Barton Ranch Plan Residential Development. It requires a rezone, tentative subdivision map, and a conditional use permit. The subject property is located on the west side of Barton Road in the Granite Bay area. It is right across from Oak Leaf Glen Subdivision, and Cannershire Track is to, directly to the west. We'll come back to site photos a little bit later. So the property currently is zoned residential, single-family, with a combining district of agriculture, combining a building site minimum of 40,000 square feet per acre. Surrounding properties are, have very similar zoning at residential, single-family, combining agriculture in some areas, and otherwise minimum building site of 20,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet as well.
Say that again, the last part, about 20,000, 40,000?
I was just saying that there are other properties on the, near the project site, kind of down here to the southwest, that are zoned as 20,000 square foot, minimum 20,000 square foot acreage. Sorry. Okay, so, as stated, the rezone would modify the existing zoning of residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining minimum building site of 40,000 square feet, and what it would do is, the proposal is to add a planned development combining district, which allows for subdivisions which are designed as a planned residential development as opposed to a lot and block subdivision. So they're requesting the rezone, and they're requesting that in order to have the planned residential development. This would allow for a tentative subdivision map, and the planned development also requires a conditional use permit. So you have the tentative subdivision map and the conditional use permit to allow for this planned residential development, and this will consist of 10 residential lots and two open space lots on a 10-acre parcel. Here is the tentative map for this project. I'm just going to go through some of the aspects of the project in more detail. So as stated, the rezone would modify this so that it would allow for the planned residential development, and the purpose of this is to cluster the development, this is something that is allowed by the planned development district, where you can cluster development and reserve spaces otherwise, and so in this case, they have, they have 10 acre, or they have 10 parcels on the 10-acre property, but they are clustered towards the middle. And the sensitive areas on this site are located to the northwest and the southwest of the property, and they're sensitive because they have sensitive environmental habitat, including wetlands and riparian areas. Both of those areas are very similar in what they provide in the area. So what's happening here is, planned development requires open space areas, so they're providing these two open space areas. One is 78,000 square feet, and that's the one in the northwest corner, and the other one is approximately 22,000 square feet, and that's in the southeast corner. The property's going to range in size from approximately 22,000 square feet to, I think I have 34,000 square feet, pardon me, and they, along with those open space lots, they are also going to have a common space lot, which will allow for the onsite road. The onsite road is required to be, or it is proposed to be, a 40,000 square foot, excuse me, 40,000, 40, 40 feet wide road improvement, 32 feet of that would be improved for the purpose of the road. Um, and then another, the, the remainder area is to allow for parking on one side of the road, so there's enough area for that. And then, of course, the properties themselves can provide parking with the garage and in front of the garage on, on the properties themselves again. So the off-site improvements would include Barton Road. And, uh, for the area that they have, in order to improve the, the road, it would be improved to half of a thirty-four foot wide road easement, which would include a five-foot bike lane, and then they would also have a six-foot granite, um, decomposed granite path that is running on the, uh, west side of Barton Road, all the way up the property line. So we talked about, uh, wetlands, off-site improvements. So just to discuss a couple of things that will also be impacted by this project. Trees will be impacted. Uh, we had a, uh, arborist report prepared for this project. There were a total of eighty-seven protected trees on the property. An additional two protected trees that were off-site that may be impacted by way of the improvements. Um, and then of these, uh, one of them is not, uh, excuse me, one of the oak trees on site is not protected because of the size, but twenty-one of the proposed, or of the trees will be removed. Thirty-three additional trees will be removed on the property, and a portion of those are the eucalyptus trees that have been established on the property. Um, this was taken to the MAC on November second, and we received community comments, uh, that were based on the rural nature of the project. Community members would like to see the rural nature of this area preserved as much as possible, and this includes, um, protecting trees in a smaller width for the road easement. And, uh, again, they would like to prove, they would like to see fewer trees removed, but part of that is, along with oaks, would be the unprotected trees, which are the eucalyptus trees on the site because, um, it was stated that they provide screening from Barton Road, um, and they, they would like to see that as a buffer. But again, a portion of those will be removed as a part of the project, and the applicant can speak to those a little bit better as far as what would be taken out. And then, those are the basic, the basics of it, but I would like to say that the community, for the majority of the community, in fact, pretty much all of them at the hearing or at the meeting, including those that had voiced some, uh, concerns, were all in support of this project. Um, the, the main reasons were that because it is consistent with the zoning, which I'll go into in a second, and it is consistent with the general plan. So based on that, they spoke, um, stating that they liked the project, and the, uh, MAC voted unanimously to recommend approval to the planning commission. So I'll just go on to the zoning real quick here, and I'm just gonna go through why, why this is consistent. So this project, um, as, as you know, it's zoned forty thousand square feet, and it's on a ten-acre parcel. And forty thousand square feet on this size parcel would allow for ten units. To add the planned development, the change would be that they can actually cluster these, which allows them to be a little bit smaller size than the forty thousand square feet. And the purpose of that, again, is to preserve those open space areas. And so that's why they're requesting the planned development. It's not to increase density, it's simply to be able to just honestly design it in conformance with a planned development. So, um, and for community consistency, it is bordered by two subdivisions, um, on the east and west sides of the property. There's, um, approximately one point three to two point three acre properties to the north and to the south. And, um, the general, or the, it's in the Granite Bay community plan area, and it is a residential, um, a rural residential, uh, with a zero point nine to two point three acre minimum. So this is also consistent with the Granite Bay community plan. And I, I'd say most importantly for this, that the Granite Bay community plan very clearly states that it pervades planned developments for the purpose of preserving natural areas. So it actually makes this conform, I would say more so than what it, um, than what it does now. So I, I'll also just real quickly mention that there was correspondence received in the last few days on this project. The concerns we're noticing, um, that, that it was too soon, too close to the hearing for the times that they had noticed. There is a, uh, required sign on the property that does notice, um, if you're driving by, on Barton Ranch, you can see the sign, and there's pamphlets there that you can pick up. So there is noticing on the property, and then we have our regular ten-day noticing. And, um, and just basically the same things that were heard at the community or at the MAC, which is tree removal, privacy, uh, traffic and road widening. Privacy has to do with neighboring properties, um, right adjacent on the property lines, um, that are concerned about, um, two-story houses being built so that they can kind of look over because it's at a higher elevation, um, the lot in, um, Barton Ranch. And so it could, you know, potentially invade, you know, increased sight into, uh, their properties from the subdivision. So that was one of them, traffic was one of them, and again, it's the road widening. They didn't want to see it, uh, you know, being inconsistent with the rural nature of the subdivision. So that, I would like to go through the recommendations. Staff would recommend that, the planning commission recommended the board of supervisor the following items, subject to the conditions of approval and the findings included in this staff report. And this is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project. Adopt an ordinance to rezone the property from residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining building site of forty thousand square feet. To add the planned development district, um, to allow for planned development of one unit per acre. To approve the tentative subdivision map, to allow for the creation of ten residential lots ranging in area from approximately twenty-two thousand square feet, uh, to thirty-four thousand square feet. To allow for two open space lots consisting of approximately eighty thousand square feet and twenty-four thousand two hundred square feet, and one common area for lot roadways consisting of, um, thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet approximately. And, uh, finally, to approve the conditional use permit, which allows for the planned residential development itself. So I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for Mel?
Question about Barton Road and, and the improvements along there. I guess I'm looking at it a little differently than some of the comments I've heard. Whether or not it's appropriate for rural and all that is, is a different discussion. What I'm looking at is having a developer, the applicant, improve a section of that road to a standard that won't be met on either end of it. The likelihood of, of, of the county being in a position to require this of property owners on either side because their likelihood of them ever asking for anything discretionary...
Right.
Is pretty much zero. And we've got a situation just down on Olive Ranch Road where we've got dead-end sections. And, and I guess to me, I'd like to see if the money's gotta be spent, spent somewhere where, where it has a chance of succeeding in the long run.
Well, and actually, you, you pretty much hit on it, that's, but, um, I will go ahead and let Phil Franz, kind of the expert on that, address it.
So, so, correct, the street improvement ordinance requires these projects to construct improvements along their frontage. And that is how we try to get the ultimate roadway construction built as development occurs, and it occurs in kind of a checkerboard fashion. But you may end up with situations where a, a road is widened and there's other development in the area that is not developable, that maybe there are already single-family homes. And it would stay like that until such time that the county would come in with a project to, uh, to complete any roadway widening that the county thought was necessary. But the application of the requirement is just basically from the street improvement ordinance.
So is there a possibility that the, the applicant could fund into a mechanism that, that his participation happens? We've extracted the pound of flesh, so to speak, but, but that, I mean, you have a bike lane. Get bikes on it, and then they dump back out in the street into a, a road that's barely wide enough for the cars and the bikes combined. Same thing with the doggers and that, that routinely are on that road. It just seems to me that until such time has the county is ready to, to complete it, that we would be better off having people pay into a fund and not constructing a portion of a checkerboard here and a portion here that, as far as, you know, my narrow mind can see, won't, won't be completed in my lifetime. And, and like I say, that to me, Olive Ranch is a good example of that because the big parcels have been developed, the improvements have been done. The rest are all little, single-family parcels. It's, it's, it's not going to happen, um, under the current community plan and zoning and what have you, that they're going to, that be done. And I don't believe the county has anything in their long-term plans to go and complete those. So it would just seem to me that if we could fund into a mechanism where actually we could complete sections that would be more beneficial to the public, that we'd be better off doing that than having these sidewalks, trails, and bike lanes that go to nowhere.
Is there a mechanism?
Is there, you're making sense.
Is there a, is there, is there a mechanism, um, in the, in our existing development standards ordinances that would cause this, as a possibility to happen, what Jeff was recommending?
Not that, not that I'm aware of, and we do have a representative from Public Works and Facilities, and if, if there is anything that they're aware of, maybe we can have them...
If there isn't, there should be.
I think it just seems to me like they have kind of a ways to make those advertisements and have them never be connected on either end.
And like you said, those dollars could be used somewhere else on Barton Road where it pays tax.
Go ahead, we have, we have staff...
So Stephanie Holloway again, yeah, Public Works and Facilities, so I'll maybe add to what Phil said. So the street improvement ordinance is, um, does require that projects build their street improvements, um, as part of the development. When we build projects into our capital improvement program, we take into account properties that have the potential of developing and building those improvements. For properties that don't, and you're, and you're right, on either side of this, on this project on Barton Road, most likely we would, we would have a, a county project that would infill those frontage improvements. So when we build the capital improvement program, we put in a project such as this one, Barton Road shoulder widening. The amount that we fund through the capital improvement program through traffic mitigation fees is accounted for. It does back out the requirements that the developers have to build those street improvements. So there, there is a project, um, on Barton Road to fill in, um, what development doesn't, doesn't essentially build.
And is there a timeline on that project?
There, um, there's no current project, I can tell you, uh, in the works to do that. Um, it, it's all based on, you know, the amount of funding that we've collected in, in the area and, and prioritization for that. But there's no current project to, to build those improvements. But Phil's right, that, I mean, the, historically, um, developers are required through the street improvement ordinance to do that portion of their property.
And, you know, historically, where there's been larger pieces of undeveloped property that you know are going to come into the, the plan, um, I could see that working. But what we, you know, I mean, here, we kind of worked ourselves into a corner that it, um, in, in the foreseeable future, is going to be a piece of trail that's going to need to be maintained, insured, and everything else, um, at somebody's nickel. That isn't really usable for anything.
But we, they basically require that for everybody we've been doing for the last ten years already, right?
Well, and I...
And is this the forum to try to change that, or do we do just like we did before and we're kind of narrowed to what we approve and we don't approve? I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, and it makes a lot of sense, but I mean, in this particular vote, are we...
Well, I guess that's what I asked the question. Is there a vehicle where this money could be put into something that could then be utilized when it's time to build it all?
And the answer's no, so don't we just go back to vote on this?
I guess the answer was no, right?
Is the answer no, I guess, that's what I...
I mean, the answer was no, that there's no, no mechanism to, to make it happen, like they can put the money into a development fee.
Additional mitigation fund, or, you know, into the traffic mitigation fees or something like that, no?
May I say, I would say it's more, you know, what you're talking about is more of a policy question.
Right.
If we're gonna change, you know, the, the direction we're going right now. We have the street improvement ordinance, and we have traffic mitigation fees, and, and, you know, all that's dialed in, where everything, it goes. So, you know, what you're talking about is a, it's a bigger question, it's a good question, uh, and, you know, maybe...
But right now, there's no policy in place, is what you're saying, A.J.
Correct.
There is a policy, but no policy in place that would, would, uh, would change, that, that would allow this... Exceptions or allow what Jeff was talking about.
Correct.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the conditions are written based on current ordinance. I will say that there, there is a mechanism. You know, there are instances where we've collected an in-lu fee, um, say where frontages are small and it just, you know, it's either infeasible or it just doesn't make sense for them to build fifty feet of, of roadway frontage. So there is a mechanism for, for an in-lu fee, but, but the way the conditions are written comply with, with current practice and ordinance.
I didn't understand that last, last comment. If there's a mechanism in place...
There's a mechanism in place...
We can't use that mechanism in, in this case, is that what you're saying?
There's a mechanism to collect an in-lu fee for frontage improvements, um, at the discretion of the director of Public Works. So if the conditions are written to comply with the ordinance, the director of Public Works, you know, in his discretion decides that, that an in-lu fee is acceptable for the improvements. We, we do occasionally, on rare occasion, take that money and hold it until it, it can be developed further.
So how would we go about asking him to use his discretion in this particular case?
Or would the applicant do that? Would the applicant do that maybe, after request?
I don't know.
Doing too much discussion.
Well, I think as E.J. said, this is a bigger policy issue, but this is a recommendation to the board. Perhaps what you could do is include some comments, um, to allow staff to look at this before it goes to the board and provide sufficient enough direction that we could respond. It's not to say that that could be done, but at least it's mentioned.
Works for me, thank you. To consider an in-lu fee instead of an actual project.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there any other questions, staff, then?
Great, thank you.
There's kind of, uh, on the maps, at the end of the road, there's kind of a strange-looking, like almost a donut symbol, smashed donut symbol. And I, kind of presuming that might be a detention basin, but maybe you can explain that.
Doesn't show it on that map very well.
Yeah, I, I...
Look at the, at the end of the, uh...
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay, um, I will...
Yeah, I believe that's a detention basin or a water quality feature.
Okay, and that's what to capture?
The stormwater flows.
From the road?
Yeah.
Okay. To meet the new requirements, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Thanks.
Okay, so I've got one question. So would we, assuming that we're going along with, like with Jeff, that we can suggest an in-lu, uh, recommendation, do we still pass it just the way it is and then that takes place? We need to have a discussion.
We're only recommending that the board approve this, so we would recommend they approve it, but that they consider...
Consider an in-lu fee applicable.
Following modifications, I guess.
Let's have a discussion on that later.
Yeah, let's, uh, let's get the applicant up here and, uh, see what they, what they might want to add to this discussion, if anything.
Well, good, yeah, still morning. Good morning. Uh, my name is Ron Wood. I'm with RFE Engineering, we're the civil engineers and the surveyors. And Nick Sadek, one of the developers, is here with me to answer any questions you'd have. I wanted to bring up a few items for your attention as you're considering this, and then we can answer, we can discuss what you guys have been discussing. We're open to talk about all of that, so. First, I thank you, Melanie, for presenting this. In answer to your question, that is a basin. We have three different basins on there. It's to take the runoff off for both flood control as well as for water quality mitigation, to meet the state requirements and the MS four permit that the county has. But, um, as Melanie, Melanie had said, this is, this project is consistent with the Granite Bay community plan. In fact, they encourage these PD overlays. And the benefit of this, I think, for the community in the neighborhood is with these open space areas, especially along Barton, Barton Road, that, down in the southeast, that's gonna be open space with vegetation, trees, and that will help, uh, I don't, I want to say, keep the rural look.
The visual part?
The visual part of it, right. And, uh, so we think it's a good project. I think it'll be a benefit and a compliment to the neighborhood because of the way we've designed this and laid it out. So there's, we have some additional rideaway that we have to get on the north and south, something that, that's part Barton that was never received, so we get to try and negotiate that with some neighbors. We, we're in that process. It does, uh, allow that varied lot size, which is, it, we have one that's kind of a flag lot, but with the buffers and everything, uh, I think the, ultimately, the, the whole layout will be a nice subdivision. We're proposing right now just to build the infrastructure... We're proposing right now just to build the infrastructure, and then when they come in for the building permit, they will actually do the grading for each specific lot. And I just wanted to also say about the Granite Bay MAC, I was there the month before where my, my project was not, they were not very happy about it, and they voted against it. I came back for this one, and the community was applauding it because we were following the community, community plan, and they voted six to zero. So we're here to answer any questions, but I would ask that, request that if you find it appropriate, you'd approve this project, too.
Wayne?
Well, first of all, congratulations on getting unanimous from the Granite Bay MAC.
That's a good feeling, it was a good feeling.
But as you know, some questions have come up as it relates, especially down in that corner where Lot 5 is, about elevations and visibility into the neighboring community.
Correct.
And the request for, and maybe the developer wants to address this rather than you, but the request is to have a one-story on Lot 5, condition it for that. And so I, I just wondered if that was something that, that the developer was open to?
Well, I, I think what we've, we talked about this, as far as the setbacks, we're meeting almost the maximum that the zoning ordinance provides for, but he is willing to put some vegetation along the, the, in that setback area to provide more screening than is currently there.
Yeah, because it's 20 feet right there on Lot 5, right?
Right.
And they're, they're asking if it could be 30, so...
So 20 is consistent with what the existing zoning requirements are, we have 20 on the, so on that lot, it's, it's two sides, so to the south and to the west is a 20-foot setback, and then internally, we have 15 between each one, so...
Well, I guess the question is still the one-story versus a two-story?
And we hadn't discussed that.
You can let him think about it.
I think the preference is being able to have the option for that second story.
It's just, obviously, that's going to be something that's brought up, so I just wanted to see if that's been addressed yet or not.
But as I mentioned, he is willing to put some landscaping there to provide more of a screen.
You know, I think you just kind of addressed it, but I, I remember seeing a letter where somebody was wondering how this plan incorporated some of their, their property.
Was it the letter from the gentleman across the street?
Uh, yeah, prob, I don't know.
So there are two areas, there, um, let's see, how can I, can you see where the stream crossing is on Barton Road?
You have a little, uh, player there.
And there's a, oh, there it is, okay. How do I work this? Maybe I can do this, there we go. So about right at that line, as you're going south, there's no right-of-way. Up in this area, all of this was granted when they built Rockway Way, and then this little portion right in here, that's right-of-way. But then to the north, that, there's not existing county right-of-way there either. You go back to the current deed, or the existing deed, the first one, and they had a statement in there that said, "Reserve 40 feet for a county roadway," but nothing was ever granted. So as part of this project, the county has asked that we pursue with these property owners, getting county right-of-way, 40 feet from the striped center line of the road, and that's consistent with what's on that deed. So we have approached both of the property owners, and the, one of the letters that you, that you received was from the property owner down here in the south, and I think you saw the picture where he had the flooding in his driveway. So we have talked with him, and we're, we're working with him to see if we can help resolve his issue as part of our project, at the same time getting that right-of-way for the, for the county.
Okay, so it's mainly the right-of-way on the county road, okay?
Right.
That answers another question that I've been kind of mulling over. And we see the interior road, is that going to be a private road?
It'll be a private, but it is, it is constructed to county standards, and the, the pavement width will be 32 feet, so it allows for parking on one side. And then on the south side of the road, we will have a five-foot-wide DG walkway, pathway. And of course, on the north side, we'll have no parking signs, so, for fire, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Wayne.
Well, I guess you heard our discussion earlier about the width, or the requirement to do it to county standards on Barton Road, I mean, do you have any comments on that?
That's probably the biggest comment at the MAC was, "Why are we widening this and killing these trees?" So actually, staff and I have looked at reducing the width and looking at that pathway to see, can we save some of these trees? We need, need to work with the arborist, because she had identified some of them as being in poor condition and to be removed, but we're willing to do that. As far as the, pardon me, as far as the idea of some type of in-in-lu fee, the, the owners open to that option also.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could circle back to that issue as well, as Ron mentioned, looking at the site plan, since there is no right-of-way in this location here, and to the north up here, we did include a provision in the conditions of approval for the roadway widening, that if they have trouble securing that right-of-way dedication, that there may be an in-lu option of doing some additional improvements on, on Barton Road. Sometimes in this case, we might have them do an overlay over the existing pavement, some improvement that equals the same cost as the frontage improvement requirement, and I think maybe to address some of your issues is maybe we can include in that condition a couple of other words about maybe an in-lu fee as well, as opposed to an additional improvement where there is right-of-way, so that might be an option for you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the audience, I'll open it up to the public this time, someone like to come up? Looks like you got your engineering staff with you there.
I want to apologize to everyone here and in the audience for the noise of our daughters.
That's all right, they've been pretty, they've been pretty good so far.
Priest school is not on Thursdays. So we, I am Holly Johnson.
Hi, Tom Hillisland, husband.
We are the owners of the piece of property that is nor, is on the southwest on Lot 5, and we submitted comments to you on December 2nd, have additional comments to submit to you as well, but we are the ones that have requesting a single story, that it be mandated because of the conditional tentative plan can be changed at any time. Understand the developer, we want to keep it open, but the way the property sits is, Lot 5 is higher in elevation than our property, we are substantially lower, we are, we have a single story. The property that is to the north is the Wards, they are here, and they are going to speak as well. The property to the south are the Beck's, their piece of property is a substantial distance from that lot line. Our property is single-story, the property, the Wards' property is single-story, the house that is to south of ours is single-story, so we're requesting it be comparable use. The other pieces of property, if they choose to have them single-story or double-story, all we're asking is that that one Lot 5 be single-story, so it's not encroaching into our privacy rights because of the way it would be if it was two-story. We also have pines, established pines on our piece of property in that corner, the Beck's do on the south, the Wards do as well, and I believe that there is also an oak tree on the Wards. So we're asking that the setback be, I believe it's 35 feet in code, if it's 30 feet, so it not encroach on our established trees, the roots, well, the soil, and also the privacy.
You're, just to get, you're, Lot 5, are you directly south or southwest?
I'm just going to go...
Oh, you're in the corner, you're in the corner part.
Very bottom of the corner, yeah.
We're this corner, which looks...
Okay, you're in the corner.
It looks minimus on this map, but it's a height and elevation, it looks directly into our property and into our bedrooms.
Okay, thank you, at least I know where, exactly where it is now, I've got a map out here, too.
And we have the trees that we don't want to have on our pieces of property be disturbed. Any mitigation fee goes to the county, it doesn't go to the property owners, these are our statements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
I guess, I, go ahead, Richard.
Well, I just, you know, I kind of missed, you were talking about you wanted to change the setback. Could you state that again?
Certainly, it's in the, the document that I submitted on the 2nd, that it be the 30-foot, which was what we had heard, and then I, my understanding was from the code that if there's a 35-foot setback, and in the tentative plan, my understanding is even if there's a 20-foot setback now, a tentative plan can be changed, is, am I not correct?
You're saying that there's a 20-foot setback?
No.
Huh?
I'm sorry, there's comments, I can't hear.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the setback, I've heard 20, 30, and 35.
Correct, and so from what I'm reading from the map is 20 foot.
That's what it's being proposed.
That's what's being proposed, and one comment is that the subdivision map, I believe, can be changed if we choose not to.
And so you're requesting a what?
30 to 35 foot setback.
A 30 or 35?
35, if we can have it.
Well...
I said 30 to 35, and then in the documents I submitted on the Friday, the 2nd, for 30. From that interim, I, my understanding is that there's a code requirement of 35, which is why I changed it to 35.
And the reason for that is?
Privacy, encroachment on our existing trees that are on our established, on our property, and also on that corner lot, there are, I believe, three oak trees, they're even, they're either on this owner's, or it's on the Ward's property line, so it doesn't interfere any kind of development, doesn't interfere with the established trees that are there, the roots, the soil, anything not interfering with the trees, to take out the trees, and also the oaks, there's oaks, oaks, and that's Mr. Beck, Dr. Beck.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's, it's twofold. It's because those trees have a barrier for us, so it's a privacy aspect, and also so it doesn't take away those established trees.
I haven't looked, are the established trees on, are they allocated to be gone?
Well, we have trees on our property that they...
No, on the, on the...
I don't know, that's the other aspect, which I submitted to, I'm, sorry.
They're shaking their head no.
That we submit on the 2nd is, we're a Jason property owner, we did not receive notice of the, of the MND. We only received notice of this planning meeting from a, a notice from the Planning Commission that was sent on December 2nd. So that's why you're hearing these comments now, is we did not receive notice. My understanding is the Wards did not receive notice either, and I'm not, Dr. Beck did not receive notice either. So our first notice, why you're hearing this now, is because we only received a written document that was post-stamped, December 2nd.
Okay.
My question is that, it sounds like the applicant is proposing to put some screening along there with, I guess, extensive vegetation of trees or whatever, would that be sufficient? Because I think privacy is your issue.
I, we spoke briefly when you were discussing another matter, and I think it would be great if you put in the trees, this, the, I believe you were talking about cypresses, but that's, it raises a couple of questions. Number one, there's already existing oak trees, we don't want those oak trees removed. If you're adding cypresses for additional property or privacy, great, that's one aspect. But it, a single story is our crux of our matter, is we don't want someone with a higher elevation being able to look into an area where the use around it is single-story, in addition to us having lower property lines or elevation and property.
Wouldn't the vegetation take care of that issue?
No, it would, it would, it would make a move towards it, it would not alleviate the entire problem. It, it would need to be mandated, from our perspective, that it be a single story on that Lot 5.
Okay, thank you.
Not a tentative map that could be changed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience comment on this item?
My name's Alan Beck, I'm Dr. Beck. Do you mind if I go up the map and show you exactly where I live?
If you use a, if you use a pointer.
Okay. Here's, here's 2.3 acres here, here's 2.3 acres here, I live in this 2.3 acres right here. Okay? And another gentleman.
Could you get to the mic so we can get it recorded, thank you?
Yeah, okay, so, so basically, you got Lot 5 and Lot 4. I've talked to Nick before about different things here, and Lot, Lot 5 and Lot 4, I would like the same thing as a single, a single dwelling, not a, not a two-story house. But if I look, if I stand at my house and I look up the slope, it's about a 12-foot increment of slope to the middle part, probably where that, that driveway's coming in to there, it's about 12 feet, about the middle of that, down to my house, it's about a 12-foot from, if I said that's 12-foot high, and this is where I'm at, that's how high it is, okay? So things are sloping into our properties on both these sides. So already, there's an unfair kind of elevation advantage to looking down on our property. This piece of property's been open next to me for 28 years, for probably, I don't know how many years, was a persimmons farm and almond farm, and we were always looking, we always enjoyed the lot there, so we didn't put any fencing there because that was where coyotes came through, raccoons, possums, it was one of the, kind of like a refuge, because all the building was occurring around us, so they needed to go somewhere, so we left our back property open back in here, so there was no fence, so they could come through. It's a big bird sanctuary, that whole area is like thousands of birds, pigeons, hawks, all kinds of different birds. I knew there was probably going to be no way that we could environmentally do anything, and I didn't try to approach the environmental part of this, but it's really sad on my part because I've lived there for 28 years, and to see this beautiful natural area be excavated is really, really hard. So Lot 5 and Lot 4 are right next to me, and you can see they're right on my border of my property, because that big thick line there is, is my property line. And so go half, half to that square, take half that square, and that's my property. So 20-foot, I don't know, when you're saying 20-foot setback, I'm not, I'm not sure if you're talking about the house or the backyard, but 20 feet back from that line would be, the house would be right on top of us, and, and there's nothing been proposed for this, that big line there on the south border, is there going to be some kind of concrete wall built or something, okay, or just be left open, you know, because it's going to be, I think if they go, go do a big development, they should, they should surround it with a nice wall to make it like a, you know, like, almost like a gated community, even though it's not, may not be gated, it'd be nice to have that boundary between our two-south area properties, to have a wall at least six feet tall, maybe a cement cap or something, so it'd make it look classy if we have to, you know, lose what we're going to have, you know, it'd be nice to not have their backyards come right into our backyards without a fence, okay? So Lot 4, Lot 5 and 4, I'd like to see a single, single-story dwelling there, if they're going to do it. And if, you know, if 35 feet, that, that would be, that would be really nice, if it was 35 feet up, you know, 50 feet would be great, but if a 35-foot could be over 20 feet, that would be great. Let's see, so I talked to you about the slope, the slope is coming down into our properties, a lot of water comes into our property, so I don't know the irrigation thing, but, but... When the water slopes down to our property, it should be something like an irrigation pipe right along here that comes to the road.
There will be, can you get back to the...
I don't know what they propose on that, and how they propose the water movement.
That'll be in the development standards when they, when they come through with it, they can't drink water into your property.
Yeah, because the water, the water is going to be, yeah, it's going to be diverted to our property unless it's on something nice, you know, irrigation pipe that pulls in that water and brings it to the street and dumps it under the road, or wherever it does.
You, you said the property slopes toward you, so the water's coming toward you right now.
Yeah, it will be, but we don't know how it's going to be affected when you start putting all kinds of...
I know, but a lot of the drainage and stuff will have to be addressed, you know, there are standards for not increasing the water flow onto other people's property.
Yeah, so I don't know, I've never had a chance, I mean, I can always meet somebody out there and talk to them about it, and...
I'm sure they'll, they'll address that.
Melanie Griffith, is, is that your name?
Jackson.
Jackson, sorry, Melanie Griffith's the actress, right? Melanie, I've called you how many times, would you say?
Several.
Yeah, probably three, four, five times, just to make sure that when this comes to a meeting, that we're called, and so, I heard there was a MAC meeting in November or something, nobody here knew about it, you know, so it was like, like it wasn't sent out.
Could, could you finish up your comments, please?
Yes, yes. And so basically, the drainage, the slope, the houses being close, like 5 and 4 are right on top of my property, I'd like to just make sure they're not two stories, it'll be just going from nice, open, you know, it's, you know, bird aviary animal lot to houses just staring over our property at two stories, would be, would be nice to see those be one stories, and be nice to see if they could grade the property somehow, instead of having the slope and having everything up above us looking down on us, and that's, that's what they're feeling as well with Marlene Ward and Holly Johnson as well.
Additional comments?
No additional comments, I pretty much said what I would need to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This gentleman got up, so we'll have him come up first.
Thank you, my name is Mike Ciccarelli. My wife and I have lived right here, it'll be 29 years in March, so I appreciate you taking the time.
You're on the, you're on the east side of Barton, then?
Yes, so we live on the east side, we were notified back that our property actually extends through Barton Road underneath and into this piece, right along the edge here. We were, we were contacted by Laura Menendez from Intra-West Consulting Group, saying that they were representing both the county of Placer and the developers in acquiring use of this land because changes needed to be made. So that's when we were notified, so they have talked to us, like Ron stated earlier. We really have no interest in pursuing the $1 or any other amount easement that they have proposed to us. We really don't want the liability of owning the road, owning people walking down paths or anything on the other side, regardless of whatever anybody says the legal is. If our name is on it, our name's going to end up on a lawsuit or something else. We are willing to negotiate with the developer to acquire that piece of land. They have not made any offers along those lines yet. I just want to let you know. In the letter that we sent, the other part is, is that our land right here, actually, this is a drainage ditch on the side. And Barton Road in this area, if you look at it, there, there's a whoop-dee, I would call it. It, it comes up, it makes a little rise. It settles, it makes another rise on the south end of our property. And so, all of our water drains to the north along the side of the road. And this vernal area that you see right here, actually, water runs through there all year long. In, in the middle of the summer, when we were in the biggest drought, there is wreaths and things growing, as people have, have said. You know, we've had pheasants living in there and turkeys and, and everything else. This summer, the developers came in, ran tractors and lawn mowers and stuff and, and flattened it. And I, I don't think that, I think consistently, there's some comments around that. We think it should absolutely be left alone and let it grow back. It was green in the middle of, of the summer because there's water there. There's actually a cistern underneath this house right here. Uh, there were fishers. There's a, there's a subterranean river underneath that house. When that was built, they put a, a large French drain. They had a bulldozer down there with gravel. And you can open up that cistern and look, and there's water running three hundred and sixty-five days a year. When, when Rockhurst Way was put in, uh, the county asked for a bus stop. And so, there's a little parking spot right here on the side. Uh, when they put that in, it, uh, it negatively impacted the drainage to our house. And so, you know, what we've, we've talked to, uh, you know, with, uh, with Laura was that, you know, we felt that the engineering, when you're engineering all of this drainage plan, I, I scanned through the eighty-six-page report that's been done. You know, they're looking at what's happening from, you know, the subdivision itself. But just like you said, you know, they can't put more water into the other property. They also need to accept all the water that is coming their way. And so, uh, I would like that engineering plan, I think is incomplete. Uh, I think it needs to consider the drainage from my property, which actually, you know, comes into this piece right here. I think that their engineering should include that to make sure they're taking it, because they're not taking it all today. I think the county's, uh, one attempt to fix our drainage was if you go and look at the culvert pipe over there, they took a jackhammer and they blew a hole through the side of it to try to get water to come in at a lower point. It, it just doesn't work. The photograph that I sent you, I'm sure you've all seen, was this Saturday morning after, you know, two, three hours of mild rain, and I got a puddle going ten feet up my, my driveway. That puddle just extends as it gets worse. Uh, it's even possible for it to go into Barton Road. So, uh, those are, those are a couple of items right there. The other one is, is that, uh, I, I won't go into a lot of detail on the widening, only to, to add new comments. And that would be that, uh, yesterday, I drove Barton Road from Douglas all the way to the end where it T-intersects up by Horseshoe Bar. I've got about five or six photographs here of other land that has been subdivided. And when that land was subdivided, there may be a, a slight taper for, for the, the radius coming in and out of that land. But, but there is no obvious that I can find widening of the road that has been done. And so, to, to ask for this. The other thing is, when I read in the plan, there was a statement made in the plan that the road was going to be wide and far enough that the word "parking" was used. And parking on Barton Road, uh, would be a very bad thing, especially when you talk about this rise that is there. And I don't know if the county has, has looked at this, but, but if someone were to park there and there's a rise, and this is a feeder street into developments, if any of you have driven down Barton Road, I don't think they follow the speed limit most of the time. And so, if you have a car pulling out from there slowly, I know that, that we have to be in a very cautious situation as we pull out of our driveway. My driveway was enlarged so that we never back out. We're able to turn around and come out forwards. You have people parking there. They're going to be pulling out into a road that they're completely unfamiliar with. And the other thing is, is that when you look at this natural vernal area, I just turned it off. Does it come back on? Yeah, it does. So, so the slope from right here coming down into that, that stream that runs is, is, that's all completely natural. It's never been messed with. It runs from the road down pretty steeply. So as soon as you start widening the road there, you're going to start modifying that, that natural stream area and what's happening. And so, you know, the question is, if you have a way to not do this, because Jeff, bless you, I'm voting for you, run for office. But, but, you know, the point is, it's ridiculous. You go down Barton Road, there is no precedence. The land, this is one of the few pieces of land left. I think Ron and his team have done a great job in laying this out, you know, overall, because they are taken into considerations.
Okay, thank you.
Let me look at my notes one more time. I'm good, thank you.
Say "thank you" again.
Oh, the, the one last statement I'll make is, is that if I need to say it for the record, I will. Uh, this is premature to be approving, because with the lack of engineering and, and the fact that they don't have rights to land that's included in this, I think that they should be required to deal with those things before an approval goes forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Carlisle, and how does this work? You just? Oh.
Wrong one. Try another one.
Oh, okay. So, uh, my husband and I live in the property right here, which is east of the project. And, um, I probably will be repeating some of the stuff that Mike said. We were contacted by Laura Menendez, and she explained that she was representing Placer County, pretty much just Placer County. And that, um, we had already known that we li- that our property extended about forty foot from center of line, because we had a survey done ten years ago when we bought the property. So we, we knew that. So we were approached by the development telling us about the project. And the thing that my husband and I are concerned about is the same thing Mike is, that they're trying to get plans approved for something that they don't have complete rights to, and that, that should be addressed. And we would like for them to purchase that, because we don't want the liability of their development being on part of our property. And, um, and like to negotiate an offer for them to, to purchase that if they want to go ahead with the development. And I guess that's probably it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sandy? Oh, you first, here in front, and, 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 you, come on, you first, here. I say in front because you were in front of a, Sandy over there.
Uh, my name is Robert Cox, and, uh, I'm kind, kind of the newcomer to the area. We live in the southeast portion, and I don't know how to use this, southeast portion of the prop- the next, the neighboring property. Uh, we're kind of newcomers to the area. Uh, we have only lived there for twenty-five years. So, uh, I'd like to make some statements about this. First of all, we didn't hear anything until this recent, at, at all about this. So this is our first chance to address this and our first even look at this map, other than Roy is now gone, which was the fellow that lived there for, uh, since the internment camps, uh, forever. The, 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 the major things I would like to speak to are living in the southeast, uh, square there. We, first of all, moved there as a, twenty-five years ago, uh, because it was rural. We liked the rural. I mean, that's what we came there for. Uh, we were very good friends with the person that lived there before. And, uh, he was a great man. But, uh, the, uh, area that we, we see that affects us, the, the, the things that affect me the most are, first of all, there's a gorgeous eucalyptus grove there that has been there for, I can't tell you how long. And they're planning to chop it down, I've, I've heard today. Uh, this is kind of a, astonishing that that would be allowed. Uh, I understand we all protect oaks, but the eucalyptus are, are wonderful, and they're, they're beautiful, and they sound beautiful all year round. And to just chop those down is, is amazing that we would allow that. The next thing that I would like to speak to is I concur with my neighbors that, uh, living on the southeast area there, the southeast square, we, we are about, my bedroom window is approximately twelve feet lower than the property line there. So, and it's approximately fifty, I don't know, sixty feet away from there. Uh, the privacy issue bothers me a lot. I would not only concur that Lots 5 and 4 should be one-story, and the easement should be increased to get, get it away from the, the fence, that also 2 and 3 are also, if you built houses there, they would look directly into my house and my bedroom. And that is kind of amazing, wanting to live in a rural area. That was one of the main, main things. So, I have an issue with it, uh, being two-story houses that look down into my bedroom, uh, and my property. So I would say 2, 3, 4, and 5 should be one-story. The, the other thing is, is if, if they're going to, uh, I've heard that they're now not going to build, this is all new to me. So this is the first time I've had, even seen this map. The, the, there should be, there should be a fence along that entire property line. I shake probably too much. Can you draw the, the, the Beck's in our property line?
Okay, so we live here.
Right, we live here. Any fence that should be built there, or there should be a, a fence built there, because it shouldn't be open range. Uh, I've got a, probably a twenty, uh, I've probably got a forty-year-old, fifty-year-old barbed wire fence is what I am. It's old wood and barbed wire there. And, uh, I don't know if that's appropriate to, as a barrier between me and a neighbor. I mean, that would be, I, I would look at that as offensive. Uh, there should be some sort of decorative fence there or as a border. Uh, the, the borderline should be moved up for the homes away from that fence. And, uh, you would hope that it would be some, I'm giving up rural for a deck, some sort of decorative, at least minimally decorative, uh, fence. Uh, one of the, one of the additional, uh, issues that I have, pardon me, is I, where I live right there, you can see those arrows going down. Uh, there's three arrows on the bottom there. I want to tell you about that area. That area above that, up to the street, I'm very familiar with it because I've had to work with it and, and deal with it, and Roy, the previous owner, for years and years and years. That, that, the water flow that currently comes off that, which is only probably, um, not even up to the street, but halfway up to the street, the water issues that come off that flow onto my property. Uh, I have a confluence of two creeks currently in my backyard. Uh, the other, the other creek comes from across the street this way. They can, they confluence on my area, and then they dump onto the Beck's area from there. Uh, only a small portion of his property is affected, but my entire backyard is affected by that creek. At, I would say, five to six times a year, that creek area that flows off that onto my area is, I've seen it thirty feet wide and four inches deep and flowing so fast that as my dog runs across it, they get knocked down. I mean, there's that much water that can come off that. To add, to add, um, house, homes there that are going to not allow that water to be absorbed, and to add a street there that is going to somehow dump water into that creek, the only place that water can go is into my creek. And now I see for the first time there might be another swale on top, which would take the additional other half. If, yeah, that swale up there, I don't, I've never known that creek. But if, if I take additional water on my property, it's going to be very invasive. I mean, I'm already talking about thirty-foot wide, four inches deep.
We'll let the public works address it after public comment.
Okay. And then, the, the last thing that, that I have that is an issue for me is I assume the pathway, can you draw that pathway?
The DG, this thing?
Whatever this is, it comes out and almost dumps on my property. So it seems like people are going to be taking a path to my property. And if there's no fence, uh, it's, you know, I, 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 that's like crazy. Why would people take a trip to my property? And then the, uh, I guess the very last thing I said is, when they did do the reconstruction of that creek area, the creek bed, uh, they had, they had tractors and things out there, uh, they proceeded to knock half of my fence down on my property, which is an old fence, but, but it's kind of, uh, crazy that people do that to other people. I, I, I can't understand it.
Any more comments?
That's, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
MC, are you, uh, are you one of the property owners there that, uh, that the, the county doesn't have right-of-way across your property on Barton Road?
I have no idea.
We don't know.
Huh?
It's not part of the project, so.
Well, I mean, as far as Barton Road goes, uh, there's a county right-of-way adjacent to your property?
We're not aware of that. We own, we own this big square to Macargo Road. I don't believe we have an issue.
You own Out to Barton?
We own to Barton and to Macargo, and then the other fence.
Okay, well, we can, we can find that out later. Thank you.
To add one additional thing, uh, that I kind of forgot about, about the water. I agree that, I agree with Mr. Beck that there should be some sort of drainage forward along a fence line there. Uh, the only problem with it is, is that, of course, adds to my problem of getting water off my property. And, uh, I can't see any way, there, there's no, on the street, there is no, uh, cul-de-sac or, or not cul-de-sac.
Drainage.
Culvert, culvert or anything like that for it to go to. Everything there, including Mike's property, everything there goes onto my property and goes through my entire property from three hundred feet from one end to the other, and then dumps onto the Beck's. It's, I don't know how, you know, I, I hope somebody knows how to fix something like that, but, you know, it's just, there's a, there. Today, there will be, I will have a creek thirty-foot wide and four inches deep.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Mrs. Cox.
Okay.
The little whoop-de-doo that, um, Mike talked about is a, a deal. I, uh, we have an ability to turn around and exit our property headfirst with cars. And I warn every deliveries person that comes, do not back out on Barton Road. Because again, I know traffic's probably checked all these things and the speeds and et cetera, but it's very dangerous. And periodically, we will have accidents at people wanting to turn left onto Macargo, because people are coming from Douglas and, um, you know, speed up, just as he said, same thing the other direction. And Barton has become a thoroughfare to, uh, Rockland Road and 80, and, uh, it, it is. And then as we increase the number of properties at the Hawks' subdivision with that possibility of a little roundabout, et cetera, we are again going to have more and more traffic. And, uh, yes, we moved there for the rural, and we've noticed our animals, uh, start to disappear, the wild animals and stuff, as things get built up. So, um, that's what, I agree with everybody else.
Thank you.
From our area.
Sandy, um, is your-
You have another lady back here standing up.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to have to kind of close this up if it's not new material as far as drainage and stuff.
I think this is new material.
Okay.
My name's Marlene Ward. I live in the Canachia, right next to Lot 5. Um, a couple of things that I want to bring up is, I have a question first. It seems like something that was brought up initially, at the very beginning, is they're requesting a rezone. Does that mean, as we've never gotten any notice, has this ten-acre, ten lot been approved? Or is it still just single family and they're asking to put ten homes?
The area is zoned for ten units, as is.
So it's zoned, it's, it has been one home?
Well, I don't know how long it's been. I don't know how long it's been, but the current zoning now is for ten units to be built on there. And, and the current proposal is still ten units. It's not, not increasing the number. They're just compacting them a little bit closer in the middle and leaving some, two open spaces.
So it, when, I'm, I'm a little curious, when did it change? So, it, when, I'm, I'm a little curious, when did it change from one house or has it always for, I've lived there since nineteen eighty-eight?
I, that, that I don't know. Well, when does the zoning was changed? EJ?
I guess, uh, the, to answer your question, the property is, is zoned to allow up to ten units on that property.
So, for twenty-eight years?
But to do, but to do that, they would have to actually come in with a tentative map like they did today. The rezone, the only thing that rezone affects is adding a PD designation, which, which allows you to develop it as a planned development with smaller lots. So, the rezone does not increase density. It's just that it allows another mechanism to, to develop the property in a certain way. But the, you know, the number of units under the base zoning or the PD zoning, it's, there's still a maximum number and it's, it's the same.
So, I moved there in nineteen eighty-eight. So, ten lot, ten homes have always been able to be developed on that property. That isn't something new that has been approved. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, my, correct. Yeah. My understanding, the Granite Bay Community Plan, which was adopted in eighty-nine, if there was any change, it might have been there. But at least since nineteen eighty-nine, it's probably always been.
Okay. And I moved here in eighty-eight. I used to give people directions to my house. This is how rural it was. And I moved here for the ruralness. The second signal off of Barton, when you get off on Douglas Boulevard East, turn left. That second signal was Barton Road. The only things that existed on Douglas Boulevard were TJ Maxx, the Blue Center and, um, uh, Target. Sierra College was a Boulevard stop. They then put signals and then they had to readjust those signals again. So, they widened it, widened it again. That's how much development I have seen. Um, I have a couple of issues. I mean, I would love to just see it stay as a single-family one lot. And I know we did, a friend of mine had called the current owner or their representative and inquired about purchasing a straight shot back from lot, my lot in Canashire all the way to Barton. I would love to do that in order to keep the ruralness and to put a, you know, a barn there and farmhouse, you know, chickens to keep with the rural quality. They never got back to us. They let us that they, they told us that they were still in communication with the city or the county and they'll get back to us. We're still waiting. In addition, we talk about the traffic. Um, and I'm going to cover some other, I think, very serious environmental impact report issues that I really think, let's keep that as a sanctuary. There are wildlife that have been impacted and we have seen it. We've lived there since eighty-eight. But we talk about that there's already, it's on the maximum, um, um, traffic. I don't know the terms. I think I put it in my thing, LOSF. I personally was involved in an accident. My car was totaled. I was injured seriously. Um, I was coming off of Douglas, going to turn left on Mcargo, and I was rear-ended by a man probably going fifty, sixty miles who lived on Rockhurst. So, he was just going home and flew over that thing and I was stopped and he rear-ended me. My car was totaled. So, I, so when I read this report that I didn't get any notice of until recently, had I known about the MAC meeting, I would have been there. No one told us. How are we supposed to know? So, now all of a sudden we get this and all of us residents there, we didn't know. I heard from Melanie. She goes, well, there's a sign there. I live behind. I don't always drive down that street. And when I have driven down that street, I see a post, a, a sign that has been, you know, wrecked a couple times and there's no flyers. And plus, we're driving and it's a dangerous road as it is. When you go down there, there's the other bend which goes right into Caroli- Carolina or Caroline Estates. There's been accidents there. People speed and, and, and go. So, I am not in favor of ten more units being put there. They, the report, this big, big thing...
Can I, can I interrupt you again? Property owner, I, I'm speaking. The property owner has the right to put ten units in there right now.
Okay. Well, that I understand.
So, the, I mean, so this, since nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay.
So, this, what we're discussing today is, is basically a layout that combines them a little, a little smaller in, in, in the internal part and puts some, some extra open space, you might say, on each, on each corner there.
Okay.
But it's, it's got, he's got the right to, 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 to put ten homes in there right now.
Okay. That I was not aware. As I said, I moved in eighty-eight. So, with that, let's get to then the animals and the, uh, the clearing that they've already done. They did go in there and they cleaned up a lot of the property. When I read that thick report that they had, it talks about Avery's and, and migration and plants. Well, all of that was disturbed. We don't see the owl that used to sit in our backyard in the tree at nighttime. So, most likely its house was destroyed. We don't see the hawks that we used to see during the day, not to the number flying around. Those homes were destroyed. We've heard a lot of coyotes and as the Bex said, the coyotes, you know, roam and, um, the people that live, um, next to the Bex, they did talk about, they could see the animals. Those homes are being destroyed and those animals are starting to run, you know, not in their homes anymore. They're running on Mcargo and Canashire. Just yesterday morning, I did see a coyote. I couldn't believe I saw a coyote. But he was on the road and we've seen them on the road. So, I would like to have an EIR report done.
Okay.
I don't think that the study that was done was in detail enough. I think it was looking, it, it needs to be more in-depth to see what really lives there, what homes. It can't be by mitigation. It's not cutting down an oak tree and planting an oak tree elsewhere. It's actually taking away an animal's home and habitat. And once they're gone, they're gone. You can't transplant these ones. So, that's one of my concerns there, um, is that I would like to have an EIR report.
Can you just wrap it up a little bit? I didn't put a three-minute timeline on today, but I think we need to kind of start wrapping this thing up.
I have, um, information on this setback issue then. It says twenty feet and I guess by the new county law, twenty feet is fine. I have the Canashire requirements right here and that was put in with Placer County. Our requirement is thirty feet. And so, I know Holly Johnson said thirty, thirty-five. If we're required thirty by what was filed with the county, I would like at least a thirty-foot setback for the side going to my property. In addition, I'm sure that the Bex and Holly would also like a thirty-foot there. We're required by that.
Okay.
I think the development next to us should be required by the same.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm concerned about the water at the end and the elevation dropping in. I see at the end of the cul-de-sac there, that's going to be, it sounds like a, um, a capture point. Well, that will drain right into my yard. And then I have new issues to deal with, with the drainage. Um, I also want a single-story. I'm concerned about the elevation and them putting more dirt, making the house higher and invading our privacy. So, I would like it to be mandated. I put in my information. Um, there's also a lot of trees that border my property line. Uh, there is a barbed wire fence that I believe is on the property line. Many of the oak trees and their root systems are right on that line. So, they're partly in my property and in the other property. My concern is that when they build that lot, that they're going to just bulldoze all those down. Once the tree's gone, the tree's gone. Putting in another tree takes years to grow, even if it's a fast-growing. It also disturbs the root systems for my existing trees that I have. So, I'm concerned about what they're going to do to the edge. Um, let's see, single-family, I want the EIR. Um, and I would also like the hours of construction to be modified. Uh, six AM, there's little children living in our neighborhood. Six AM is pretty early to start a tractor and a bulldozer. And also, I think weekends, we should, you know, respect the weekends. I know the gardeners that come in, they respect the weekends too. They're, they're careful to do it later. I mean, I would like no construction on Saturday and Sunday. Um...
Okay. Is that it?
I think that's primarily it. So, I would like an, uh, EIR done to protect the habitat. Perhaps it should be more of a reserve and more areas protected there because of the animals that live there and the vegetation that is there. We don't see the frogs anymore. We don't see a lot of the animals. And I would also like to make sure that the setbacks are the other major and then that it's a one-story house.
Thank you. You made those points. Sandy?
Some of your points that you sent in the letter, I think, have been addressed.
Yeah.
Or most of them, maybe.
I just want to say that MAC meets the first Wednesday of every month and has done so probably for thirty-some years. So, if the people in my community don't know about it, I'm sorry. But they do meet regularly the first Wednesday of the month and there's a website and you can get on the county website and find it. And the agenda's on there and all these projects come to MAC. And Ron came and Nick came to our community association to our board meeting and we looked at this project. Of course, we don't know all the problems that some of the neighbors have. But I put out a newsletter once a month to members of our community who pay to belong to our association. And that's what we dwell on, is development in our community. I walk this project every morning and I've done so for more than ten years now. I extended my walk ten years ago and now I go all the way down Berg and around Cargo and up Barton. And my concern is that I don't want to see Barton Road widened there. Uh, this is the last undeveloped parcel on Barton Road from Douglas all the way to Cabot Stallman. Um, and to widen it in that one little area is nonsensical to me and expensive to the developer. It's going to put more impervious surface and they're talking about runoff and I think that would increase the runoff. Um, there's a culvert there that comes out just south of this proposed driveway and I have never seen it and I walk it in rain and shine. Um, I don't see water coming under Barton Road from the, um, Rockhurst Road and Oakleaf Glen over there. Um, but I think most of the runoff that comes off and I'll see, once in a while, I'll see Mcargo Road flooded. It's coming from this parcel. It all, it's like swells and goes down there and that lot on the corner, they have swells coming through there. And there is water in there, but I don't see it up there at the culvert. Maybe a tiny little trickle. So, I don't know where that comes from. Um, my concern is to have a decent, uh, path. Could you put that picture up there that shows Barton Road with a little trail that runs along it?
You gotta come up to the, up to the podium to get the clicker.
This one.
Okay.
You see this little trail that runs along Barton? I walk on it every morning. It's probably twelve inches wide and they're talking about putting a six-foot-wide path through there. And those oak trees that you see, they'll have to take them out to do that and to widen the road. Uh, I ride my bicycle, uh, quite often on Barton Road. Um, and every once in a while, there's a little area where you can get out, you know, you have a little bit more room. And then all of a sudden that disappears and you're back on this fogline thing. And to me, that's very dangerous. I get nervous if I, I think people behind me don't realize that my path is running out and I'm going to be coming closer to the road. So, I don't think that improves it. Um, that's a very, um, good sight distance, the whole length there. Double yellow line, um, and there's, I counted seventeen different driveways being served off Barton Road from Mcargo up to the curve up there. And they serve anywhere from one to seventy-three homes and none of them have widened areas for turnout. There's one at Rockhurst that was put in as a bus stop and the people in Oakleaf Glen don't want their kids walking out to Barton Roads and now the bus goes through their subdivision. Um, to, to widen that road in that one little short distance just totally destroys the, um, the atmosphere of that road. It is primarily a residential road. Um, and those are my comments.
Well, thank you, Sandy. Anyone else in the audience, uh, like to address something new? Well, you already spoke. I'm not going to let you speak. You were up here about thirty minutes. I'm not going to right now. Anybody else on, in the, in the, uh, audience?
There's clarification.
Clarif- one question. No, not five minutes. One question.
Five seconds.
Oh, five seconds.
No, I'm Robert Cox.
Yeah?
And, uh, my house...
Microphone, come up. They'll just, ask what the question, clarify.
I'm Robert Cox and my house is a single...
Yeah.
...story residence.
Oh, okay. You're, I was going to ask you when you were up here and I forgot.
No.
Tell you the truth. Thank you. Um, seeing no further comments, I'll close the public hearing and, um, ask the applicant if they would like to make some comments on some of the issues. As, I think they could be broken down into one or, not one or two, but just a couple of different traffic, drainage, privacy, maybe those three.
Sure. Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, I took a bunch of notes here. So, I think the main things that I wanted to talk about were, uh, the concern with, uh, when they were out there removing vegetation, they were cutting it, they didn't move earth. And it was something the, in, in discussions with the fire department, they were saying, you know, we need, get this vegetation down for fire protection. So, that, that has been the main reason for it. Uh, the eucalyptus trees, what, what's being proposed for removing right now are just the ones that are in the roadway, uh, the ones that are where our drainage ditches are. And then if you recall on the, do you, do you have that? Can you go back to the site plan, Melanie? Okay. So, if you look at the cul-de-sac, you can see going in the northwest direction, there's a little road right there. Uh, there's an existing six-inch sewer line that is just on the other side of the fence there that we're going to be tapping into. So, that's to construct the sewer line and an access road because there will be a manhole there. And then that sewer will go through the subdivision there. And we're actually proposed, uh, asked to extend it to the north property line to serve future. So, just in that area, and if you see between lot two and three, that drainage ditch there, we're taking all the water from the road and, uh, either putting it in that basin at the west end or down that ditch with the little basin before it goes into the wetland area. And then also at the front entrance, we also have another little basin where that water will go down. And we'll, we will infiltrate as much as we can for the smaller storms and then it will overflow. And we retain based on the county standard so that we don't increase flows off the site. As far as drainage along the south portion there on lots five, four, three, that, we're not doing any work on that, uh, that, in those areas at all as part of this project. That'll be work that'll be done when they come in for the building permit. And the county does have standards as far as the drainage, even with the MS four permit. Once you get over so many square feet of new impervious area, you have to take that water and you have to infiltrate it or do something with it because of the state permit. Uh, so, those, those little, uh, those, uh, drainage issues will be reviewed during the building permit. On ours, our preliminary plan, we are not increasing the flow because of those basins off the site. So, um, fences, what we proposed was to, on the south side and on the north side, or are more like a field wire fence. The gentleman said he has a barbed wire. We were proposing just to repair or replace with a wire fence along those two. And our thinking was rural, it's rural now. Let's, let's keep it rural. The one on the west side, a lot of that is a wooden fence. And so, right now in our preliminary plans, we specify repair or replace as needed to keep the same type of fence. So, that's what's proposed right now for that fencing. Uh, and the other comment that I note, heard was, uh, as far as widening on Barton Road, um, we're not proposing any parking there. The only parking that was being proposed was on one side on the onsite road. The widening for Barton Road is to give that , um, travel lane as well as a paved bike lane, uh, for, per, per the county standard. So, I think those are the main things that I heard.
What about the one-stories?
And the one-story, again, I, I understand that they're concerned because actually I have that in my same home. I had somebody build behind me and they, they raised the grade and I, I have a much smaller setback. Uh, but vegetation does miracles. Uh, and I know the owner is, is willing to put some vegetation along the property lines to provide more screening. And, uh, I, I would hope that that would help resolve the issue. I mean, you can put some redwoods in there and they'll grow pretty quick. So...
Let me see, a question.
Uh-huh.
Lots four and five and probably even three.
Mm-hmm.
Are those steeply sloping lots or?
It's, it is, there is slope. Yeah. So, we, we have the road pretty much on a ridge that we're going in with this ridge and so that everything is sloping to the south, southeast from that road in that area. And in fact, on the other side, then it slopes the other way towards the northwest.
They're talking, I, you know, I think I heard something about twelve feet. I mean, are those real steep lots or?
Uh, they're not, they're long. Um, hang on, let me, my green... Yeah, let me open up to the topo map I have. So, about right in the middle, the existing elevation is about, uh, three forty-eight. And then our road is going to be at about three fifty-eight. So, ten, ten feet difference.
Ten feet difference.
Yeah. Yeah.
So there'll be quite a bit of excavation when they're putting houses in there?
Well, there could be, or there could be, you know, if, you've seen these step foundations, they might do that too with the crawl space underneath. And since we're not really doing the, the houses right now, we haven't looked at that detail.
Okay. And, yeah.
These are, these are large lots, these are good-sized lots?
The smallest one is about half an acre, and the largest, largest one is almost three-quarters of an acre.
So then, why is it so important to be fixed on this 20-foot setback?
That was, we use that just because that was the, in the zoning ordinance, that is the standard for-
So would you have a problem with making it 30?
Making it 30? Would you have a concern making that 30 feet?
We're going to be selling the lots, depending on whoever's going to be building the lots. Because we have the issue of-
This seems, for the size of the lots, 20-foot setbacks seems small to me.
Small.
If one comment to think about would be that if you're wanting, if, if, if the thought is to try to limit those to single-story, and then you increase the setbacks-
Yeah, you're going to-
Your, your building coverage is going to start getting excessive.
So you could compromise at one or the other?
Yeah.
Possibly so, possibly so. I'm just saying that, that when you start doing both, what you're, what you're leaving is a lot that's pretty much covered by structure or a big percentage of it, which then is more impervious surface and what have you.
Wait, wait, but go back a minute. If you reduce the setback, you can't increase, it's not like you're going to increase the size of the house.
I'd say if you, if you, if you go to single-story-
Oh, okay.
-only, then they're going to try to get same-size house on that lot, single-story, you're going to increase the coverage, the percentage of the lot that's covered.
Assuming that they're going to have like, you know, a 5,000-square-foot house or something on a half acre. So, so it seems to me that the, it's setbacks or height limits seem to be two of the biggest issues.
I think so. Any other questions for the developer right at this time? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll be right there if you have more.
Okay, the staff have any final comments?
Yeah, I don't know if I was going to speak to the, the setback issue. I, you know, no one, you know, everybody's talking about single-story, two-story, you know, the zone district has a height limit of 36 feet. So if you were going to limit to a single-story, you know, someone can technically go in there and have a single-story that's 36 feet high. Now, could that happen? Well, it actually could happen. So, you know, maybe the setback is, you know, if there was going to be a, you know, increased setback, that would be easier to address than a single-story versus two-story. We've done both in the past, but I-
How about a larger setback for a two-story home?
Then you have, what, variable setbacks?
Right. You could, you could do that too.
That's complicated. I've dealt with that.
And this, and this is a planned development, so we could establish special setbacks for this subdivision and, and have that as a condition of approval.
Then, then the, the ultimate lot purchaser would have a choice. They could either go a little larger setback and up, or they can have the fullness of their, their, the use of their lot, a little less setback, and, and build single-story.
Correct.
Okay. Any other concerns, questions? Well, yeah, I'd like to revisit that right-of-way issue. And, you know, it's kind of a question on, you have Macargo Road-
Re-ware there.
-and Barton Road. And, you know, it's outside the project, but there was a little question whether there's a right-of-way there. So how much of Barton Road is really, has a right-of-way on it?
So you're talking all along Barton Road?
Yeah.
Well, for this particular project, we didn't look much, much further north or south than, than this project, so I'm not prepared to address where we have right-of-way and where we don't along Barton at this time. But I would, I would guess that, I believe this property owner right here owns down a little bit to the south of the, of the project, so they probably own south of the project right in this location here on the map. They probably, I'm assuming, own there as well, since they don't have the, since they own on the west side of Barton along this location. But I'm not, I, I don't know, I couldn't tell you right now where there is right-of-way and where there isn't along, along Barton Road.
Okay. So that's kind of a challenge for the county then, isn't it?
I mean, we can look into it and research it, I just, I, I had not prepared that research for, for this project.
Yeah, well, we probably can't research it today. I mean, I did hear a comment that if we build a trail, that it's going to dump people onto these people's property, if they really own it. It could be an easement already, I don't know.
Right, so we would only, we would only be constructing things like that where we did have existing right-of-way, or else we would have to go and obtain that right-of-way from the property owners.
Yeah. Though it sounds like there is somewhat of a trail there already, that-
There are locations where there is trails, I mean, you heard Sandy talking about them.
Pathway.
Whether they're in right-of-way or not, I, I couldn't tell you right now.
Okay, well, it does kind of, I mean, we were having a discussion about widening the road and the difficulty with the right-of-ways, and I guess there seemed to be some kind of a consensus forming, but in my mind, if the county takes a pass on it now, that they probably aren't going to get a chance in the future to do any widening on Barton Road.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that's correct. I mean, we try to get the right-of-way when these projects are in for approval. We can get right-of-way and not get improvements. That's, that's always, that's always an option. These, these are off-site easements, so the applicant has to try to go obtain those from someone else. And then, I don't know, maybe we can have county council discuss what happens if they can't obtain those easements. I don't know, condemnation or things like that, maybe if you could address that for a minute. But that's, we do try to get those easements when we have the opportunity. Otherwise, yeah, we would have to go purchase them in the future if we needed them.
Well, that was, I mean, that's kind of my issue in the discussion is, you know, we wouldn't want to, and this meeting suggested we take a pass on the future, but if we can preserve the future somehow, that would be desirable.
That, I believe, was the max actual recommendation. They recommended no improvements, but get the right-of-way in case we needed to in the future.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Now, I've closed the public hearing already. We've heard so much about this already.
You're talking about me, though.
No, we're not. We're talking about this project right now.
You're talking about my property.
We, we, I know, we're, we're, if it's your property, somebody's going to have to get it from you, whatever, but we're trying to discuss what we should do with that road. I think, I think obtaining an easement and not improving the, the, with Sandy and other people said about preserving the rural character of it, you know, but, but again, not precluding what are the future, like, like you just said, not preclude the future, getting the easement as part of this, this development rather than-
The right-of-way and even the funding that was going to be spent today could be-
Yeah, right-of-way, I meant, I meant-
The access to the land and, and some money, but instead of spending the money today for improvements that can't be realized today.
Well, we can make that, we can make that adjustment as we forward it to the, to the Board of Supervisors.
I agree with Jeff.
Yeah.
And in lieu.
Yeah, I believe, I believe Chairman just, there are conditions in a place that require, you know, that, that they acquire those easements.
Okay. Here, any further discussion?
Well, I'd like to return to just idea of variable setbacks and height limits. That seems pretty, pretty sensible to me. It might be worth considering something just like that for those three lots. Show some help to the neighbors.
I, I think that would, wouldn't be unreasonable to have a, a deeper setback or for-
Yeah, 20, 20 foot for one story, 35 for two, something like that.
Like that, I, I wouldn't be opposed to, to making that rec, you know.
Since you are making most of these recommendations, why don't you make the motion?
Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe on that, variable setback.
All right. Mr. Chairman, before you make the motion, there was discussion of that in-lie fee earlier, did you know?
We got, we got the staff talking, and I can't hear the staff right now.
There was, there was some discussion of incorporating something into the conditions, maybe for an in-lie fee of the road improvements. I'm just, if you would like to add that in there, I have some language to, to do that if you'd like to.
You know, that, that, we'll figure that, or we'll hear that language, but now getting back to what Richard was saying, or what some was about the variable setback versus one versus two stories, is there kind of an agreement with that among the com?
Yeah, I think I-
Okay, so can, can, can EJ, do you have any language for that part, part of the?
So if I'm hearing this correctly, the commission is looking to restrict setbacks as follows on lots Three, Four-
And Five.
And Five, 20 feet minimum-
20 foot for singles-
For a single-story residence and 30 feet for, for two-story structures on just those three lots.
Correct.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
No.
Close, no name.
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, I'll take the-
Go ahead, why don't you go ahead, stab, take a stab at it.
Recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the following items to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions heretofore as, as attachment C. That we adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project, attachment D, supported by the findings. A, the mitigated negative declaration, it's been prepared for the project in compliance with SEQA. And let's see, rather than reading all these, can I just say as attached? Thank you. I would like to hear staff's recommendation on modification of language relating to in-lie fees. I think that's probably going to be condition 28.
You should first, let's take up the rezone recommendation first, or are you intending to do these-
You want to do them all separate then?
Are you intending to do these per, per item and, and a roll call? That might be the most prudent thing, because then we can gauge where we're going to be adding in things, okay?
Okay.
So I believe you have a motion about the mitigated neg-deck on the floor right now.
Okay, is there a motion? There was a motion for the negative deck. Okay, it was seconded by Wayne, made a roll call on the negative deck and the findings on that.
Mr. Okuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
And Mr. Akuri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, your next motion is on the rezone. We wouldn't be talking about conditions for the rezone, so you can take that one up next.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to rezone the project, single-family, combined agricultural, combining minimum side of 40,000 square feet to residential, single-family, combining agricultural minimum. Did I do that? Oh, with the planned development density of one unit per acre, supported by the findings attached to the report.
Second.
They're moved in seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Okuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Akuri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Now, now would be the time to address any other conditions and-
We want to do that for the tentative map or for the conditions of approval?
Both.
Both.
Both, okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the tentative subdivision map to allow for the creation of 10 residential lots ranging an area from 21,849 square feet to approximately 34,000 square feet plus or minus to open space lots. And one common area lot for roadways, supported by the findings as attached in the report. And I guess also the discussion regarding increased setbacks on lots Three, Four, and Five, from 20 feet for a single-story and 30 feet for a two-story. And a provision for the developer to pay an in-lie fee instead of making the roadway improvements to Barton Road in addition to dedicating the right-of-way. Did I get it?
Phil, you had some language.
Okay, so to address that recommendation, we would be adding some text to condition number 28, the second paragraph. We would be adding to the end of the first sentence of the second paragraph, "Or a fee in lieu of construction." So that, that sentence would then read, "In lieu of constructing the required Barton Road pavement widening improvements identified above, the county may at its sole discretion allow and/or require the construction of an alternative off-site roadway improvement along Barton Road that is of equivalent size and cost, or a fee in lieu of construction."
Are you having a new condition about the subject?
I can go for that.
I'll second.
I guess-
By Jeff, and who seconded it?
Richard did.
Richard, you seconded it?
I don't see. Somebody down there seconded.
I did.
Yeah, Mickey did. Okay, move, move, seconded. Roll call.
That was all one motion. And then, I'm going to change.
I think it was just tentative map. Or now tentative map.
It was, was three with the addition.
Can we approve the conditions in the same motion?
You're going to be recommending approval of the conditions of approval as amended and as read, read into the record and subject to the findings.
As part of this same motion as approving the tentative subdivision?
Yes, the recommendation about approval of the-
I would like to modify my motion to approve the, the conditions as amended in addition to the tentative map.
I'll modify my second.
They're moved in second, roll call.
Mr. Okuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Akuri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did we address the option-
One more.
Of the 20 or 30 foot?
Yes.
Is that in there?
That's the initial modified conditions, correct?
We have to approve the-
That's correct.
Initial use permit.
Oh, we already did, just did.
Okay.
So I think we're done, correct?
Yep.
Are we done?
No, I only heard the, unless I missed something, I only heard a motion on the tentative map just now.
No, I had modified my motion to also include approval of the, the modified conditions.
Yeah. Or, that's what I heard.
Yeah, that's not correct. So, so modified conditions attached to the tentative subdivision map, so now you'll need to make a motion on the conditional use permit for the planned development.
Number four.
Oh, okay.
And include the same modification.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve a conditional use permit to allow for Barton Ranch planned residential development, subject to the findings attached, A through M, in the report.
Second.
Larry's.
Oh, and the conditions as modified.
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Larry.
Yes.
Roll call.
Mr. Okuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Akuri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be all forward.
Yes, I, I point out for the record that this is a recommendation only to the board, therefore there are no appeal provisions to the board. It will be separately noticed for a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors at a later date.
Okay, thank you. We have one remaining item, camp, Lisa Dog boarding facility that's being recommended for continuation or something, did I read that?
Continued, yep. Actually, an open calendar?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil, and I'm with the Placer County Planning Services Division. This is a pretty brief item right now. Staff is requesting that this item, which is a third-party appeal of a minor use permit to operate a cage-free dog boarding facility for up to forty-five dogs in Newcastle, be continued to an open date to allow staff to conduct environmental analysis prior to the planning, planning commission's consideration of the appeal. The applicant is here and I am also available if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to make a statement at this time?
I would like to...
Why don't you come up?
I know it's been a long morning. I'm Paula Lyle and I would like to make a brief, brief comment, but I would like to have my neighbor come up first to over, give them an overview.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would point out that the, the item, the portion of the item before the planning commission today is the request for continuance.
Oh.
Public testimony should be limited to us before the commission. This is not a hearing on the item.
I think you answered the question. I was going to appeal for more time for us as a community to put together some information[1745.23]